...in Satellite City Hall here in the MacIntyre Center. And I will ask Councilmember Zermeño to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand if you're able. Ready, begin. The Pledge of Allegiance is to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, united ground, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all. Thank you.
Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll?
It's good evening, thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Zermeño? Yes?
Here.
Councilmember Marquez?
Present.
Councilmember Mendel?
Here.
Councilmember Lamon?
Here.
Councilmember Wahab?
Here.
Councilmember Salinas? Mayor Halliday?
Here.
Here.
Okay. So that brings us to the public comments part of our meeting. And first, I have a couple things to make because we are not in our chambers with all of our technical stuff around. We can't operate the meetings as we usually do, so the speaker button isn't working for councilmembers who want to speak. So you're going to have to jump up from your chair and yell at me. No, barring that, I think we'll try to, you know, just, well, I'll try to keep an eye out, try to talk to the president and get it where it's needed when we want to speak. I think when we are going to address, I'll address after a item. Maybe we'll start at one end and work our way up, but we'll try to make that work. Likewise, voting will be by roll call vote. So then I also want to welcome everybody from the neighborhood who's here and elsewhere, who's here tonight to join us for this meeting. I see that we're getting people drifting in. I don't know whether the six o'clock PM start time was maybe confused some people, but I hope not. But anyway, here we are, and we do have Spanish translation available at the back of the room if you would like to avail yourselves of it. See that nice young lady sitting at the very back of the room there? And then we also have childcare available this evening, and if you would like to avail yourself of that or your child, please see our city clerk over here, and she will direct you to where the childcare is being held. So with that, we are going to go ahead and start on public comments. And I'm going to ask Councilmember Lamon, who has a comment to make, to start.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Thank you to city staff for being here tonight and to all of you. And I just needed to put out an apology to a family medical issue that's going on, and so if I need to leave, then I will just do that, but I wanted to let that be known ahead of time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, and we wish you well. So the first card for requesting to speak under public comments is from Victor Ariano. Hello, and just come right up here and speak into that microphone now.
Testing. Hello, I'm a recent graduate from Hayward, and I just recently moved back with my family. So I have two issues I would like to talk about. I live in South Hayward, near the South Hayward Park Station, and I want to talk about specifically to Marquez after reading an article about how the Sohei apartment complex was designed with minimal affordable housing units. Can we talk about if there is any plan going forward with how the City Council will proceed to work with developers in order to provide better housing for local residents and keep the interest of the residents in mind? That's just my first point. My second point is, I don't know if anyone here is familiar with HERO loans, but HERO loans are a solar panel, kind of like a home development loan system that I have seen take advantage of, especially low income community members, my mom and my neighbors as well. I want to talk about how there is currently a class action lawsuit being continued in Los Angeles for those kinds of loans, and if the city has any plans to address those issues. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay, our next, yeah, we're just getting into our, getting familiar with our new surroundings here. Our next speaker is Tom Silva.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Tom Silva. I'm feeling a bit of a flashback because I was involved with the group that helped build this building 20 years ago, and I'm glad to see that it's still here serving our community proudly today. I'm here today to talk about Cherryland. As you know, I've been in business in Hayward for a long time, in Cherryland as well, and things are really good in Cherryland right now. You look at what Supervisor Miley and Sheriff Ahern has done with the Public Works projects. We have a street sweeping project that kicks off day after tomorrow through NS on Friday in Cherryland. You see the work that they've done on Meekland Avenue. You look at our community center that's being built over there by the Mecca State over there on Hampton. The new school that we, as a community, pay for, you know, through the bond funds over there. Cherryland is doing very well. You look at what the sheriff has done, Gray Ahern, and specifically the D-South programs. Well, first, we see, because we have excellent service from the Edin Township Station, where you look at D-South, the deputy sheriffs athletically, and what they've been doing there in the community, all of those things are all positive benefits being delivered by our elected officials in the Cherryland community and getting enhanced to this day. Can we do better? Sure. There's a number of things that we can do better over there. But if you take a look at it, its housing stock is in good shape, the businesses that are there are in good shape, it is on a real upswing. So I'm here to say today, you know, I hadn't heard about it in the East Bay Express and such, I wouldn't have been aware of it, but we're fine in Cherryland, we really are. And we would hope that you would take the time and interest that you are going to look for to expand on that and use it here in our community, here in Hayward, because there are a lot of different things that need help here in Hayward, and that bandwidth could go a long way here. We're doing fine in Cherryland. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bishop Jerry Macklin.
Thank you very much, and welcome, everybody, to South Hayward. Glad to see you here again. Thank you. Madam Mayor and members of the council, I rise to announce a very special date here in South Hayward and in City Hayward, November 17th. And it's on here, I just emailed it to all of you, I think you see. November 17th at 3:30 in the afternoon for one hour of service and a salute, and then a wonderful repast to follow afterwards in the courtyard of the Fellowship Hall in honor of what we have named as community heroes, and our salute to them. And there are two of them that we'd like to pay tribute to. One is Pastor Chuck the Corner of Calgary Baptist Church, which is just, ironically, is just a few doors down from where we are right now. Pastor Chuck has been a major part of Hayward, he's done so much in so many ways, and we want to just take time out and say thank you to him and pay tribute to him, to salute him, and to let him know that his labor is not in vain. And we're going to do that that afternoon. That's one person. The other person that we want to pay tribute to is Chief Cheryl Borkin. Her last official task of employment, of course, was as the police chief for Cal State East Bay, but also she served in Hayward for many, many, many years, and she was part of Hayward PD that helped us, and she was responsible for this particular neighborhood, and much of the work that was done to help turn this neighborhood into a different neighborhood, into another direction. We owe her thanks for the many, many years that she served us in this community and in the city of Hayward, and we want to do that. We want to say thank you to both of them. I'd like to invite all of you, you're free that afternoon, it's only an hour, about 3:30 to 4:30. We'll feed you afterwards, and we'll have a great time of celebration. I've already asked the NAACP to join in with us and other agencies here in our city who will give them awards and speak on their behalf to express our appreciation. If the city would like to join in that, we would welcome that and make time to make sure that our city officials have the same opportunity to do so. So thank you very much. You'll get additional information, but please mark November 17th at 3:30 in the afternoon. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, and you've chosen two very, very good people to honor. Next speaker is Diane Fadalden.
What was this? The local? Yes, yes. I wasn't sure. Okay. We have a complaint. I have gone through this for several years with housing. I talked to Section 8 housing because I belonged to, I had got Section 8, and I got neighbors asking me about it. It takes 10 years. The listing has been closed for several years. To get on the list, it takes 10 years to be able to get an apartment. People on SSI, people on welfare cannot afford these rents. The rents are high, there's no such thing as affordable housing, I don't know where everybody's getting it, but there is no such thing, as everybody knows. Like I mentioned at the community service meeting last night, as far as I go, if you think there's a lot of housing, find it for these people and not, take them home with you and you take care of them, because rents are high. I've had people come and say, "Do you have an apartment for rent?" "No, no, we don't." "Could you buy, could you help us find an apartment?" Yes, there's apartments, but people can't afford the rent. They can't afford the rent, they can't afford $2,000 a month. I went through the listings, I go through it every week. As far as I know, if I had to move right now, if I didn't have my Section 8 housing, I'd be out on the street, hoping to be able to afford the rent that they came up with. So I wish that people would understand there is no such thing as affordable housing. A lot of people cannot afford the rents. You need me over and over and over again because I tend to say, "Hey, because we can't afford the rent, the rent." Owners are going to $2,000, why high? It was not too long ago that some owner raised a tenant's rent over $200 more a month. This is what happened. This is what happened, and owners are raising. I'm glad you came up with the five, five percent, but if they could, if they could get it up higher, they would. Exactly, I argue that by owners, it's a, "Oh, no, we can raise it all we want, that's as well." Go ahead, right. You can only go up five percent to a lot of the standard standards. So I appreciate that, you know, we get this out to people that people cannot afford the rents without Section 8 housing, and that's never going to open the rent is going. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Charlie Peters.
Yes, hello, Madam Mayor, City Council. My name is Charlie Peters, Clean Air Performance Professionals for Co-Operation Motors, and we think that your attention to some issues have some possibility of improving our lot. Right now, with gasoline prices, it seems to be going up a bit, and we perceive that if we make the use of ethanol in our gasoline voluntary rather than required, that's commonly known as a waiver. The governor, the president, is asking for a waiver which allows him to go from 10% ethanol to 15%. What that means is that when you, what he's asking is the ability to add more ethanol, which gives you more emigration, which uses more fossil fuels and increase of pollution. He's also allowing some small refiners to have a waiver, which California's been after for decades, which allows us to use none, no ethanol at all, and we believe that would lower the price of gasoline, in our opinion, to $2 a gasoline, $2 per gallon immediately, and provide enough credits, pollution credits, to fix all the roads for free. And there's something we'd like to add to that. We have, tend to have a tendency to want to punish people in order to improve behavior. We think that we could use respect to significantly improve performance, quality, and behavior within the local community as well as the state. So we're working hard on trying to share that information. Been a major fire announced continuously for the last several hours, a major supply of ethanol in the Bay Area that's burning, going into the air, probably going into the groundwater. If you took a glass of water and you add gasoline to it, the gasoline separates from the water. Ethanol, you add ethanol to water, and it is totally soluble and stays soluble, and there is no standards for ethanol in the gasoline, and it's a carcinogen, it causes cancer. When we had a problem in Lake Tahoe and we took the MTB out, replaced it with ethanol, we took the MTB out because they thought it was a problem to the water supply, they're shutting water wells down, added ethanol instead. The MTB was reading about 10 to 15, a thousand parts, 10 to 15 parts per billion, and they replaced it with ethanol, they had 130,000 parts per billion of ethanol, and the ethanol is rated as a human carcinogen. There is no standards for ethanol in our water supply, it's affecting our water, our food, our electricity, and many of our commodities, and we think there should be an audit of this and a better look at this, because we think huge benefits are available if we'll just take a little look at improving this process. I have some information back there that anybody's interested, that I printed up today. People are interested, we give you some information.
Thank you.
Consider, thank you.
Thank you. Next, Jennifer Ellis.
Good evening, everyone. I feel so excited to be here with you tonight. I have two quick thank yous and then two things I want to speak about, so fortunately I speak quickly. The first thank you is for the childcare tonight. We're doing an increasing amount of really engaging folks, and we know that childcare is crucial in those moments, so thank you for that. And secondly, I think many, many people in this room, the council included, put so much effort into the Hearts of Hayward Volunteer Dinner last week, and it was such an enjoyable evening, so thank you for that as well. So my two things. The first one is that we are here tonight adjacent to Tennyson Park, and I just wanted to appreciate the council's support of the South Hayward Youth and Family Center. La Familia is a partner on that project, and we are so excited to work with the other partners to really build something that we can all be proud of. I think that there is a tremendous effort, community, to create spaces where we can do more meetings like this, we can really do a lot of civic engagement in South Hayward, and La Familia is committed to that. And so as, you know, some preliminary designs come your way and things like that, I just wanted to say we are so grateful to be at the table, and we're so committed to being collaborative and to really putting the needs of this community first. Second thing that I want to talk about is, as you know, about a year ago, FESCO, the Family Emergencies and Shelter Coalition, became part of the La Familia Network, and many of you on the council have some relationship with FESCO, and we appreciate that. The campaign that we're doing right now is actually kind of about you, but mostly about new folks. So in this affordable housing crisis, right, which we heard a little bit about, and I know you are doing, you know, everything you can policy-wise to make things better, we know that families are still being left behind. We know that there are a ton of families who are $1, $400 unexpected payment away from not being able to meet and meet, and we know about 40% of people who are currently homeless are homeless because of either a rent increase or an eviction, right? So there are lots of monetary things happening in the water, in the air right now. And so at FESCO, what we do is we provide shelter and transitional housing for families, and we are committed to keeping families together. That's been part of our mission since day one in 1986. And so we really want to bring new people into the FESCO fold. And so what we're doing is we have a campaign going on called Give FESCO Five, and we are asking new donors to give $5. And there's a way to do it, there's a website, givefescofive.org, and that's the word "five" written out. And we found a really generous private donor to match those. So all donations from new donors will be matched one-to-one. So we're hoping to raise $6,000 from this campaign, and that's with the match, so $3,000 from new donors. And you will see, we are, we're there, we're at 11:20 as of today. And so I'm finishing up very quickly. The way that people can help is spread it on social media, put it on their emails, right? There's a ton of ways to just get the word out and help us. And then we also have these adorable postcards, we have 5,000 of them.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes. It is a worthy cause. Next card is from Caleb Stanford.
Evening, I'm Caleb Stanford, and I'm Chief Operations Officer at Versio Vascas Health Center. We operate healthcare clinics throughout Hayward, downtown Mission Boulevard, Tennyson High School, Hayward High School, also at Chauva College, down the street at our Firehouse Clinic, and then right here on this property across the way to our Silver Peak Catcher Clinic. I want to echo what just said, thank the City Council and the city for leading the effort to create a new youth and family center right here. I think that shows the dedication of the city to elevate the people of this neighborhood to allow them to aspire and reach their potential. We're excited to be partners in this new project so that we can continue to provide better healthcare to this community. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the last card I have, requesting to speak under public comments. Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment? Okay, did you want to make a public comment on something not on the agenda otherwise? Okay, would you come forward? Could you give your name?
Yes, my name is Catherine Ruby. Thank you for letting me speak.
And would you fill out a card for the city clerk after you speak?
I'd be happy to, thank you. I also wanted to address the issue of affordable housing. I have been a resident of Hayward for many, many years. I have been displaced from my home twice because of either rent increases or asking me to leave because the landlord had decided to sell the property. I am currently homeless because I cannot afford rent. This lady here did mention there is no such thing as affordable rent when people are living on limited incomes, for which I do. I am considered disabled in many ways. I do draw a social security check, and I do try to work part-time to help bring in some income, but it's not enough to pay for housing that is out there. And it's frustrating. And I worked very hard towards the AB 1482 to get passed, and I'm now very discouraged to find out that there are mass evictions happening right before that goes into effect. We need some solutions. I don't know what those are at this time, and I would really like for everybody to be aware of this and to consider some of the options that are out there that can help alleviate some of these situations. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Do you also want to make a public comment? Okay, just give us your name and then, please, fill it both up for both of you, if you could just give the city clerk a card afterwards.
The city clerk has my card.
Oh, okay.
Name is Reverend Aaron Macklin from Glad Tidings. And thank you for allowing me to speak, Madam Mayor, and to all the members of City Council. I wanted to actually stand to say thank you. The last time that you all had this meeting in this building, we actually raised some questions and concerns about keeping us involved in the improvement of the Tennyson Corridor, and I'd like to say thank you for being true to your word. Right after that, we were reached out to from the folks who were making the video, the stack, and I'm pleased to let you know that I will be signing autographs after this event. I am in that video along with my baby girl who's here tonight, so thank you for keeping us involved in that. And also, I think the street improvement is just going very, very well. It's not a day you go by where you don't see all these great improvements on the Tennyson Corridor, and thank you for that. It's interesting because we actually did a huge event on Saturday, and some of the improvements that had been going on kept us from doing some of the things that we wanted to do. We wanted to put a couple lawn lines right in front of the church, and the team came back and said, "They're working on the middle of the street." And I said, "Oh, how terrible, that's pretty terrible." And it was just great to see you still working on a Saturday, improving the street, so thank you. We'd also like to invite you to a luncheon that we're having, so stay, pay close attention to your email. As you know, they're improving the, what used to be the four cellus apartments is now a big manor in the Glad Tidings neighborhood, and we're willing to have a thank you luncheon for all of the workers who are there, just to say thank you for what they're doing. They're not all the way done, we're halfway there, and you'll be invited. It'll be a barbecue luncheon and all types of great food, so the work might be a little slower that day, but please come out and just say thank you to the workers. We don't want people to not feel appreciated for what they're doing. I also wanted to make sure that I spoke about the increase of the hourly wage. We had some young kids who were coming tonight, we're going to move our Bible study with the kids to bring them here instead, but the six o'clock kind of shifted that we had about 30 kids coming. And as a representative of Hayward who actually went to elementary school in Hayward, it was good to go away to school and to come back home, but I came back to a city that I could visit but really couldn't live in. So it'd be great to actually increase the hourly wage to improve the life of kids who are here and not have them be sent out, to not enjoy the city that's being built. And I think as kids are growing up, we should encourage them to actually want to stay in the city that we're improving, unless we're improving the city for folks who we don't really want to be here. So I think it'd be great to allow kids to be incentivized through money so they can afford the city that we're building up so wonderfully. So thank you, and you'll hear from us again. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card I have is from Christina McMillan.
I am Christina McMillan, and I was in no way prepared to attend a City Council meeting for Hayward this evening. I was dropping my children off at the community center to spend some time. My current situation right now, I am homeless. I transferred here from shelter to shelter from Mobile, Alabama, and I realize that across the country, there is a wide problem with affordable housing and homelessness, and it has stricken across so many barriers. And so I want to come here and speak as an agent of change coming into this community, being a person who is in need of assistance in many different ways. I am a 12-year veteran in the Army, and I am receiving assistance and support through VA. So I'm not in a situation where I don't have anywhere to go right now. I'm not looking for any pity or sad looks or anything. I'm purely standing here in strength, and I want to help strengthen other people within this community by standing on my feet, and no matter what the circumstances are, no matter what the adversities and obstacles are, that we can always overcome those barriers. And so standing here as an agent of change, I just wanted to introduce myself to the City Council so you know that you do have a new resident looking to be a new found resident of the Hayward area, and I would like to join and get more involved with things that need to be done in the city. Based on my own experience, my own stay, I also graduated from University of South Alabama for social work, and my daughter had issues medically which I had to stop job searching to take care of home. And so these are the circumstances that led me to the position in which I'm in right now, and I realize a lot of mothers go through these situations, so I just wanted to offer the fact that we can continue with community development. So I just wanted to offer the fact that we can continue with community development and growth and also join forces and funds to make it available for the community to take care of the community within itself. And so again, thank you for having the meeting today unexpectedly. I was able to attend and also be heard at the same time, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yeah, welcome. Okay, that is the last card I have for the pass to speak under public comments. Other cards are on specific items. And seeing no one else coming forward, I'm going to call on Councilmember Marquez.
Thank you, and thank you all for being here. Just to give a little background, public comments is just really what it implies is we don't, you're basically sharing your views with us, so thank you for sharing. But I just wanted the public, if this is your first time coming to a meeting, we don't respond to public comments, we just take in that information. And if there's follow-up necessary, we will do that, or staff will do that. I am going to make two brief public comments only because I didn't hear anyone mention it. But the Eden Clubhouse, the building right behind us, the youth there are putting on the Alamos Mortal Celebration on Saturday, November 2nd, starting at one in the afternoon. They call it a South Hayward Block Party. This is their second event. It's driven specifically by the youth in our community. There's going to be music, food, a tate de, and giveaways. So please come and join in on that fun. And then this is a very early plug, but save the date for Saturday, June 27th. This will be our, I believe, seventh annual or sixth annual, seventh annual All-America Festival. And this is an event that takes place at Mount Eden Mansion. So save the date, you can see myself, Councilmember Francisco Sernenio, Karen Orwell, and other committee members if you're interested in participating or having a booth. But I just wanted to highlight these events that are happening in South Hayward. It's really important for us to get out in our community, and there is a lock win in South Hayward. So please join us at those events. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that really early heads up.
Twenty-seven, okay.
Next year.
Twenty-twenty.
Okay, so now we're going to move on to our consent calendar. That is items one through three. I have a request to pull item three, so I would entertain a motion on items one and two. The motion was made by Councilmember Marquez, seconded by Councilmember Lambden. Is there anyone opposed to passage of those two items? Seeing no one, they are approved unanimously. Item number three, which is adopt resolutions authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute an agreement with Tyler Technologies to fund Soft Resources LLC and amend the twenty, twenty, uh, capital improvement program budget to transfer and appropriate funds to this project in the amount of six hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars to increase the project budget total to eight hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Thank you. I just have a couple clarifying questions if you guys don't mind. One is Tyler Technology and Tyler Industries, the same organization?
Tyler, I'm sorry, I can't see you, I'm there in front of the table. It's okay. Tyler, so Tyler Tech, okay, so Tyler Technologies and the other, I'm not.
So on page two, it mentions Tyler Industries on the second or third paragraph. And I know we want to have, execute an agreement with Tyler Technologies. I just want to make sure, are we talking about the same company? Yes. Okay, and it stated that on the second page that in two thousand and five, or two thousand and fifteen, we had an agreement to purchase an ERP system unit through Tyler Industries. However, the system did not provide a robust permitting component. Is that correct?
I wasn't here at that time, but I believe that is the fact.
Okay. And we are asking with this particular item, three, three things. One, to execute the agreement with Tyler Tech for one million, eight hundred, I mean eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars. Soft Resources, a consulting company, for one hundred and forty-seven thousand. And to adjust the CIP budget to transfer six hundred and twenty-four thousand to the project budget, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I wanted to ask in regards to particular, this particular tool from Tyler, is it a hybrid model, a cloud computing only? Cloud, hundred percent cloud?
Yes.
And do we have any requirements for redundancy and so forth? And my concern around this is more because if there is an emergency and technology, you know, electricity and so forth is kicked off, you know, how are we ensuring that our departments have access?
In terms of requirement, there's one option, one option only in terms of their hosting solution. Their hosting solution does have redundancy, but it isn't something that we baked into the contract itself because there aren't alternatives to it. We are piggybacking on other examples other cities have done, and we're using that as the best-case solution set.
Okay, and so we have, basically if an emergency happens or anything like that, do we have any secondary options, protocol, anything like that?
I mean, with it being a cloud solution having two redundant locations, the intent is that you would crawl, you would cut over to whichever location was not impacted by it. And because it's cloud-hosted, you should remain to have access if you have internet access.
If you have internet access. And if I remember correctly, I think the staff report also said our technology surcharge generates about two hundred K annually?
Yes, for development services, we have over the past two years collected approximately two hundred thousand annually.
Okay, and the cost for this particular contract will be about two hundred and nine K annually?
Yes.
Okay. And then as far as the timeline, is there a way to shorten the timeframe? Whether we go in parallel, split some of the options, do we have any options like that? Because I understand we're supposed to start this in roughly two years rather than sooner.
We've estimated based on speaking with Soft Resources, we have a representative here, Cherish Cruz, who's with Soft Resources, and she's gone through this with other jurisdictions. And based on what we've seen in other jurisdictions, it does take anywhere from twenty to twenty-four months. And just be realistic in terms of what the changes are that need to happen in the training. We do anticipate that it wouldn't take about that long.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
Mayor, I'm going to move the item.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Marquez.
Can I just speak to it briefly?
Well, let's see if we have a second. Okay, seconded by Councilmembers Armenio.
I just want to thank Councilmember Wajab for her questions, but wanted to let the public know that this item was discussed at the Council Infrastructure Committee, and it was recommended unanimously to bring the recommendation to the entire City Council. This is something that will definitely streamline processes for our department, and we made it very clear that not everyone has internet access, not too many people are tech savvy. So there will be a kiosk and development services available to any member in the public that needs assistance, and staff will provide that as well. So I'd be happy to move the item, thank you.
The item has been moved and seconded. Is there any other comments? See no one, I'll ask for, do you want to do this by roll call? Okay, Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Sernenio? Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Lambden?
Aye.
Councilmember Wajab?
No.
Councilmember Salinas?
Yes.
Mayor Holliday?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we're moving on to our next item of business, which is a work session on acceleration of the statewide minimum wage in the city of Hayward, or the potential for that. And we're going to hear this evening from our Economic Development Manager, Mr. Paul Nguyen.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. It's great to be here tonight to present on this work session item regarding a potential acceleration of the statewide minimum wage for the city of Hayward. I want to thank Catherine Ralston, Economic Development Specialist, who has a pretty extensive background with this kind of work in her previous life with Redwood City. She'll be conducting the presentation, and I'll be available to answer any questions as well.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Catherine Ralston, I'm the Economic Development Specialist here. So before us tonight, we have a proposed agenda. We're going to talk about background information on our state minimum wage and look at other cities and what they've done to accelerate the minimum wage in those jurisdictions, some policy alternatives, and then look, talk about a community engagement and outreach plan. So in two thousand and sixteen, the state of California passed State Bill thirteen, which created the accelerated minimum wage to fifteen dollars an hour. Under that proposal, employers with twenty-five or less employees will reach fifteen dollars an hour by two thousand and twenty-three, and employers with twenty-six or more employees will reach that by January two thousand and twenty-two. Once both business types have reached fifteen dollars an hour, a CPI adjustment of up to three point five percent will be available each year, starting in January two thousand and twenty-four. And that would happen each year as long as there is no economic downturn, in which case the governor then can cease that CPI adjustment and hold the minimum wage until the economy returns. As of January first, two thousand and nineteen, forty-three local agencies across the country have enacted a local minimum wage ordinance that is higher than the state law. And of that forty-three, twenty-three of those cities are currently located in the Bay Area and have a minimum wage that is faster than California state law. Sixteen of the fourteen cities in Alameda County have adopted a local minimum wage. Those cities in Alameda County are Alaina, Berkeley, Emeryville, Fremont, Oakland, and San Leandro, with Emeryville having the highest minimum wage of sixteen dollars and thirty cents. The other cities which are currently following state law is Hayward, Pleasanton, Dublin, Livermore, Union City, Newark, Albany, and Piedmont. So tonight we have two alternatives that staff has proposed, and we'll run through each of those. The first alternative would begin an increase of one dollar per hour in July, of July, two thousand and twenty. We would have our initial increase at January two thousand and twenty of state law, and then an additional dollar up to thirteen dollars an hour for small employers and fourteen dollars an hour for larger employers. We would then have an additional increase up to the fifteen dollar an hour, which we would reach fifteen one year prior to the state requirement. Some pros of this alternative is it does allow adequate time to notify and educate businesses. It also allows businesses time to adjust pricing and financial systems to accommodate the change from state requirements, and it provides an increase to employ employees at a quicker pace than the state law. A con to this is that it does require a mid-year notification and change for businesses, which is off-schedule from state law and may potentially cause confusion. Alternative two is we would begin the increase in January two thousand and twenty-one of increasing our minimum wage, and we would also, once again, reach the fifteen dollars an hour one year prior to state law. This allows, once again, adequate time to notify and educate the businesses and the businesses to adjust their pricing and financial systems. A con of this is while employees would make more than state law, the increase would be slightly slower than alternative one. In addition to the alternatives, we've also had some exceptions and exemptions that other jurisdictions have looked into. Some of those adopted wage increases have created different exceptions, such as different types of industries would be exempted, business sizes would be different than what state law currently is, youth workers or trading wages may be exempted, or some collective bargaining agreements, businesses that provide health benefits or educational benefits may be exempted from the increases. In addition, many jurisdictions have looked at the idea of tipped employees, and per state law, an employer may not use an employee's tips as a credit towards its obligation to pay the state minimum wage. So an employee, an employer must pay that minimum wage and not count tips towards that. Staff recommends only including the exception of businesses with twenty-five or fewer employees to have one additional year to reach that fifteen per hour to be consistent with the state law. Further exceptions beyond this will require additional education, monitoring enforcement, which increases the city's fiscal impact. Once the city adopts a local minimum wage, we would be responsible for monitoring and enforcing our local ordinance. Generally, enforcement is handled on a complaint basis in which employees who are not being paid the correct wage must file a grievance complaint. Once a complaint is received, an investigation proceeds and corrective action is taken. Enforcement can be handled either by city staff or contracted to an outside agency, and the fiscal impacts would require additional research depending on the council direction for how we would want to handle those complaint bases. Anticipated staff time and costs associated with enforcement will fluctuate depending on the education time prior to the ordinance going into effect, the number of complaints received from employees, and the number of years that our local minimum wage is different from state law. If we adopt an ordinance that then brings it back into compliance with the state law level, then compliance review goes back to the state. Once we begin this process, we would like to then enact a community engagement efforts. So in order to have a successful implementation of the local minimum wage, extensive community engagement is encouraged both prior to ordinance adoption and after adoption leading up to implementation. With direction from the City Council, staff will begin the community engagement process to meet the business leaders for feedback on the proposed ordinance. We would host community-wide meetings, two-business-focused meetings. We'd meet with the Hayward Chamber of Commerce, the Downtown Hayward Improvement Association, United Merchants, and the Hayward Business Association. We'd also host a meeting with HARB and the Hayward Unified School District. And we'd send postcards to all those with a business license. In addition, we will be establishing a dedicated webpage, an email, and social media posts. So we have five questions tonight for the council to consider. One, should the city increase its minimum wage on a faster timeframe than the state? Two, when should the increase begin? Three, should the city include any exemptions or exceptions? Should enforcement be handled in-house by city staff or through a contract with an outside agency or consultant? And is the proposed community engagement plan adequate? Are there any stakeholders who are missing from the list? And that concludes our presentation, and we're available for any additional questions.
Okay, so I'm going to hold council questions, and we're going to, this is a work session, so we're going to take public moment, and then we'll have questions and comments from council at the end of that. And I do have several cards. The first is from Kim Huggett. Right, Councilmember Mendel is asking to remind everyone that because this is a work session, there will be no final action tonight on this item.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Kim Huggett, President of the Hayward Chamber of Commerce. Welcome to South Hayward, glad you're here. The chamber's position is that we should stay on the state's schedule because accelerating that timetable will have an impact that falls disproportionately on small independent businesses and the hospitality industry. Staying on that schedule will also keep the city from having to create an enforcement bureaucracy and will allow market forces to determine wage increases, allowing our employers to stay competitive. Some small businesses have already been making plans to meet the state's new standard, often including a reduction in staff and increasing prices. This is already underway. Accelerating the state's timetable will only hasten these moves. We don't have an overhead tonight. I was going to share with you the Harvard University study, Survival of the Fittest: The Impact of the Minimum Wage on Firm Exit. Its conclusion is that every one dollar raise, a rise in minimum wage leads to a fourteen percent increase in the likelihood for failure for restaurants with Yelp reviews rating three point five stars, basically full-service restaurants, and in this case mostly independents. An economic study this year by Mills College on the impact of the local minimum wage increase in Emeryville found that restaurant owners in particular are, quote, "struggling, rapidly raising menu prices, and increasingly looking to leave", particularly small, independent, non-franchised, established. non-franchised establishments. Among the findings was that 23% of food service businesses plan to leave Emeryville in the near future, and most were decreasing worker hours. 33% had decreased the number of employees. I also have a chart from a news blog called the Emeryville Eye, which, I'll put it up on the overhead here. But this news blog, and it shows the number of small businesses that have closed in Emeryville since their minimum wage escalation is more than 40. These are all small businesses, many of them restaurants. I appreciate that the city manager, the deputy city manager, and the economic development manager presented to our Government Relations Council earlier this month. What they heard from our business leaders was that the net effect of creating a new local timetable would be job loss, reduced shifts, increased automation, and fewer jobs for youth.
So I'm told that, that, that our clock was tempered.
I was checking my time.
I know.
All right. We ask that you maintain the state's current minimum wage schedule. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Our next speaker is Luis Reynoso. He'll be followed by Lisa Brunner.
Luis, say again, you got your time.
Oh, I see.
Okay, Lisa Brunner. I wanted to address this issue about, I consider $15 not a minimum wage but a livable wage, especially in the Bay Area. According to your own website, the median-priced home in Hayward is $630,000. To qualify with no bills, you're looking at a minimum $120,000 a year. A $15 an hour job is about $31,000. That doesn't even qualify you for the average apartment. One bedroom, as per your own website, is $1,964. Over two years ago, Dr. Reynoso and myself did address the council because the school board had passed a minimum wage for the school board that all employees, including crossing guards, would get $15 an hour. And I was assured at that time that the city pays all its employees $15 an hour, which is great. But I would ask them to go the additional step, which is what the school district did, in that everyone that the school district contracted to business from us will pay all their employees $15 an hour. The city should be setting an example for all its other employee, employers in this city, and everyone they should do business with should be paying their employees a livable wage. The livable wage gives us a sustainable, stable workforce. If you look in town, even McDonald's pays $15 an hour. You go to your favorite restaurant, where's your favorite server? They were priced out. They couldn't afford that $1,900 apartment because they weren't getting even $15. So start at the top, start with the city, and look around, because it's only full-time employees when you start adding health benefits and everything. That $15 an hour is the difference between people staying in their homes, actually being able to afford to go to our restaurants and stores and support the city. So thank you. I would ask you to go ahead.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Deddesus Ramis. He'll be followed by Jeff Harris.
Most of you know me, so that's my introduction. As an economic development specialist, I have found exactly the same things that Kim has found, but I also found the same thing that you just heard, that people, even with minimum wage, cannot afford to live in Hayward. One study, though, that included San Jose, says that with the minimum wage, at least people will be able to spend more money. And this is the whole point, because really, the minimum wage is not the issue. Affordability and access are the main issues here. How can we get more people in Hayward to be able to afford to get access to the goods and services that they need? The minimum wage will not do that. Actually, Andrew Yang used just a version of the universal basic income, and that's $1,000 that he's suggesting, but to be adjusted by the cost of living on a yearly basis. Other people are saying that what we actually need is an additional opportunity for the workers and the people of Hayward, all of them, on a choice basis, where anybody who wants it can use it and aid, add to their personal incomes that way. It costs about $120,000, as you heard, to live in the city of Hayward. The Pacific Institute actually says it's a little bit more now, but it's gone up. They started with $117, and they're about $125,000 per year to live in a city like Hayward. How do we achieve that? It's only gonna be through some special kind of opportunity that is aside from what we do as work. And until we grapple with that, we are really just not present the main problem that we're facing in America. This is gonna come and hit us, as we all know. So we need to, I applaud that you're doing this much, but we actually need to do a lot more. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Jeff Harris. He'll be followed by Nima Abdul Karim.
My name is Jeff Harris. I'm the owner of Buffalo Bill's Brewery. And my question is, why? Why would you increase minimum wage at this point? There's no reason. We all know, if you've done a little bit of research, that the $15 doesn't go to the employee. It goes to the government. 55% of the increase in minimum wage goes in taxes and a decrease in staff benefits. The other 30, 38% goes to inflation. It's a program essentially to create taxes based on inflation. And I can tell you, Buffalo Bills, when minimum wage went from $9 to $12, we increased prices $380,000. And so a hamburger went from $12 to $17. So the minimum wage worker, when they go out and dine, they now have to pay a 38% increase in the cost of goods, and they have to give back 55% of their earnings in taxes, which gives them a seven cents, seven pennies on a dollar increase in minimum wage. And I'm gonna tell you, it's a fraud. And it's all it is, is it designed to create taxes based on inflation. For you to think about increasing minimum wage for hospitality, another $3 is gonna add another $380,000 to Buffalo Bills. Over this, that's $6 over this time period, $750,000 I have to create out of thin air. It's profit. It's not gross sales. I have to create much more than $750,000 to find profit, so that I can give half of it back to the government, half of it to the, to the wage earner, and that wage earner doesn't get to use that money, because inflation takes it away. There is no improvement in the quality of the life of that minimum wage worker. And I think if you do the economics, if you actually go in and do the economics, and you look at the restaurants in Emeryville that have closed, and they're, they're not going back, I would really question, where are you getting your economics? Where do you really think these employees are spending their money? They're not. The money is evaporating. So I'm very disappointed that we believe the myth of minimum wage is somehow helping people buy a house or get an apartment. The money is going away in inflation, and it's going back to the government. If the government really felt that they deserved a living wage, why are you taking half of it? Why don't you match me? I'll increase a dollar. Why doesn't the city come up with a dollar? Now we can start talking. Don't take a half, half of their earnings. Thank you.
Thank you. Nima Abdul Karim? You can let me know how you really pronounce your name. Thank you.
It's Nima Abdul Karim. Hello, I'm a freshman at Council State East Bay, and I wanted to speak on the minimum wage issue, because I'm a full-time student and working 29 hours a week, and also a part of the student government on campus. And my main reasons for working is to save up for next year and to help my family back home, because I'm from SoCal, so I'm far, but still wanna help them as much as I can. And getting paid $12 an hour is hardly sufficient enough to provide for myself and my family. And being out the Bay Area is one of the most expensive places to live, and 99.8% citizens of Hayward make less than $25 per hour, and people can't afford to pay for the housing rates. I know for a fact, getting, I know for a fact, getting the minimum wage rate raised to $15 an hour, not only lives in my life, but the citizens of Hayward. So I urge the city council to do something about this pressing issue.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Madeline, followed by Alicia Crater.
Thank you. In raising the minimum wage, my question is not what happens if you do raise it, but what happens if you don't? If you don't raise the minimum wage, you have to kind of ask yourself the question, what will people do to get a minimum wage? What types of things will people do to make sure that their money is not missed? What types of things will people, you know, have to do in order to make up for what's missed? So with that comes a possibility of increased crime, the possibility of people not wanting to work for a wage that is not livable. You can't live off of $11. You will find a way to make more than that, whether it's legal or illegal. And it's, it's not necessarily just about, well, taxes are gonna take it all. I do understand that, but you have to encourage somebody, and you have to let kids know, listen, it's okay, you can go to work. You can encourage a kid to go to work if the money is not even going to sustain them to be able to work and live. And it's not just to keep them working, but it's also to keep them off of the street. And I spoke about the kids that we were going to bring, and most of them are literally in high school, and we have several who are attending Council State East Bay, so I'm so glad the young lady spoke. But it's an encouragement for the city to let kids know, we want you to stay here, but stay here doing the right thing. And the city believes in you by paying you something that we think is a start, not a finish, but is a start, something that we can work on together. Thank you.
Thank you. Alicia Crater, followed by Lacey Amade.
Good afternoon. My name is Alicia Crater. You can hear me well.
Maybe you could pull it out.
Can I put it down? Is this better? Yes. I'm here to urge you all to raise the minimum wage to $15 as well. Not in 2022 or 2023, but now. Hayward's minimum wage is currently one of the lowest compared to our neighboring cities of Fremont, Alameda, San Leandro, Berkeley, and Oakland. Instead of being about residents who are just made in Hayward, maybe it's time to focus on making sure that Hayward residents are kept in Hayward. You can't truly expect residents to pay a 5% increase every year in their rent while only earning $11 or $12 per hour. This increase is long overdue, and I urge you all to see to it that it happens now rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanna call to everyone's attention before, Lacey, before you, you can come up, but I just was handed a note that someone is parked illegally in front of, I assume someone's driveway, or, and it's a Ford Focus, white Ford Focus, 7LLY180. License plate, yes. That is your car. Okay, I think you got it. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Lacey Amade. I am a community activist and a tenant organizer. So I'm here to urge you all to act to raise the minimum wage as quickly as possible, and I also wanna say that $15 is a start, but probably needs to be much higher. I'm happy this discussion is happening, but I do think it comes quite late. The state minimum wage of $11 to $12 is way too low for a Bay Area city with such a high cost of living. I first want to acknowledge the striking fast-food workers who in 2012 started this much-needed conversation, and all those service workers across the country who have pushed forward the fight for 15. I wanna honor that by saying that the fight for 15 is not just about the number 15. The idea behind that campaign was to talk about the need for a living wage, and a living wage means whatever is necessary to pay for everything one would need to live a full, healthy, and dignified life. And this needs to be at the center of this conversation. The focus needs to be what Hayward residents need in order to live full, healthy, and dignified lives, considering the high cost of housing, not to mention the high cost of everything else, combined with the low production of affordable housing we have going on here. It is, I'm sorry. We really need to start investing in people. This is about investing in workers who will be able to better attend to their needs and their family's basic needs. This is about working towards a collective good, and this is about what we can do as a city to do something material to combat the fierce inequality that is so relentless here in the Bay Area. And this is also about showing that everyone's work is valued. So I also just wanna mention that I think this is important, given the national situation. We had in 2017 one of the biggest transfers of wealth from the richest, most powerful people in this country, which resulted in 2018, for the first time, the wealthiest paying a lower tax bracket than the lowest-income people. And so we can't stick here and say we're in disagreement with what's going on at the federal level if we're not willing to combat that with the most progressive policy we can do here in Hayward. So I just wanna thank everyone in advance who's gonna be supporting it. It's the minimum we can do. We need to do more, and of course, thank Councilmember Waha for pushing this forward. Thank you.
Actually, it was Councilmember Mandel who originally brought this up a couple of years ago, too. I just wanted to clarify that.
And again, thank you to everyone's counsel support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
And our next speaker is Ariseli Orozco, followed by Alicia Lawrence.
Good evening, everyone. Well, thank you, Mr. Mandel, for bringing that up a couple of years ago, but I wanna double, triple thank you for bringing it back again and making sure, you know, that we do whatever we can to push this forward. I'm all for the raise in minimum wage. I've seen how families have to work two, three jobs to make sure that their kids are being fed and leaving a, they have, and that they have a roof over their heads. And that all triggers down to the well-being of our future, which is our kids in the city. All that triggers down and it affects, like, every single time I come in here, I always remind you folks about our kids, our children, because that's one of my biggest passions, you know, to make sure that we invest in them. You know, I know that lately, high schoolers have been doing more work permits. Why? Because they can afford, you know, with just mom and dad working, they also have to go and work. So let's make it, let's make a decision, a wise decision for our youth, for our kids, for our community, that really have to make that tough decision and get an extra job so that they can be able to support their families. That means less time with their children, and they're making that sacrifice. So I urge you, please, to go ahead and move this forward, and we'll be supporting all of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Alicia Lawrence, followed by Mr. Ley. Ms., sorry. Couldn't read the first name, though.
Good evening. My name is Alicia Lawrence. I live in the Burbank neighborhood, and I am a housing justice advocate here in Hayward, as you all know. So as already, it's already been said, in 2012 is when the fight for 15 really took flight, and now $15 is actually $16.77. So we can't just take $15. It's not enough. It's not enough in a time when housing is as much, is as expensive as it is. And I'm not up here saying that an increase in minimum wage means someone can afford a house, but they certainly wouldn't have to make decisions between food and rent or medicine and rent. We're talking about meeting people's basic needs, and I'm disappointed that the report doesn't even touch upon what a living wage in Hayward would be. To me, the report is insufficient for tonight, because we don't know what a living wage in the city is, because the city staff has not done the work to establish that, and I'm really disappointed. And to the other, the comments by Mr. Huggett made earlier today, I haven't read the report from Mills College, but I'm curious if Mills College has, in their reporting, accounted for the fact that people don't have money for full-service restaurants these days? Like, who has the money, in my, in my generation, millennials, who has the money to go out to a full-service restaurant, a restaurant as regularly as most of your generations have had? They don't. They don't have that money in their pocket to burn, and that's why we've seen a rise in fast casual counter-service restaurants, because those are less expensive. Those are, those are outings that people can afford. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ley? Followed by Annette Sanders.
Thank you for holding this meeting. So I wanted to first say that the first speaker discussed the prices going up and increasing the minimum wage, or just raise them more. That doesn't make- That doesn't make any sense to me, and if prices are already going up, why wouldn't we try to decrease the price and wage gap instead perpetuating the inequality in Hayward? I'm a professor at CSU East Bay, and my students are working two to three jobs, in addition to helping out their families and going to school full-time. Students are facing housing insecurity and food insecurity and show up to class tired and not alert. This affects our graduation rates. There seems to be talk about buying a house, but the immediate need is just to try to rent a house. I have a stable income and can barely make my rent every month in addition to paying off my student loans and bills. We need to raise the minimum wage and take care of our residents and the next generation who will be the ones who sustain Hayward into the future.
And I didn't, I don't have any other parts on this item after that?
No, I'm the last person.
Well, we'll see.
Give it a try. Thank you for bringing this to our attention. I want to state that I'm also one of the coordinators of about nineteen to twenty youth, ages from sixteen to around nineteen, maybe, I think it was twenty, might be twenty-one. I want to give you an incident that happened about a month and a half ago. Dad came in and needed help with his P G N E. He paid all the bills that he could, and one of the youth that was part of us that we stipend called us and said, can you take my check and help pay the P G N E so that I, when I get home from work, my license will be on it? So while we're talking about raising rates, these are real people. So this is not a statistic. This is not nothing that's not real. This is something that happens on a daily basis. It ended, ended being that the family resource in this town, Paper Parish, we all own in our pockets to help get the P G N E back on for that family. This is a family of four kids. One child was autistic. Dad's choice was to pay that bill or not help the son get his medicine. These are real issues. So my last thing before I sit down, now, no, I only have a minute. Thank you, Mr. Mendel or whoever it was that brought it up two years ago, but my question is, what took you so long?
That was the last card I have? Do we have one? Okay. Melissa Beltran.
Good afternoon. I felt inspired to come speak up after seeing some people from Cal State East Bay. I'm also a transfer student from there. Sorry, kind of nervous. I think housing and affordable minimum wage, this is a human right. Tom Brady's home, as we speak, is on sale for thirty-nine point five million dollars. Where I live in Boston, the average medium income wage is thirty-one thousand to forty-nine thousand dollars. My mom makes about seventy-two hundred to eight thousand dollars a year. I am one of those people who is struggling currently at Cal State East Bay as a transfer student because I can't afford the four thousand dollars that they're trying to charge me for the out-of-state tuition coming from Boston. And I'm starting to question, what are we really valuing here as a society? Are we valuing degrees, labels, status? Are we valuing responsibility, empathy, and compassion? From Boston to Hayward to everywhere across the world, everyone is suffering from this issue. And it's going to be my sixth year, on my bachelor's next year, and I'm exhausted. I'm burnt out. I'm twenty-three, and I'm worried about my mom's retirement next year. The people in power, the people who have the will to change this, we can all change this if we come together. But lately, it's been seeming like the people in power are only obsessed with staying in power, while the people being poor are only staying poor. So we need to open our hearts and come together. Thank you.
For anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one coming forward, we're going to close public comment, and I'll go to council comments or questions. Yeah, why don't we start down to my right with Councilmember Zermania? And we'll just move on.
Okay, so let's see. This is, we're not making decisions today, but I think eventually we will. That probably will come in about a month, is my guess. Month, two, or what do you think?
I think it depends on the direction we get from council tonight and how much additional outreach is necessary.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, I do like the fact that there will be outreach not only to the city council, I mean, to the community, but also to the various organizations, the employers, the employees, and that's very, very important. I did hear good arguments from the economic community, from the chair, from the chair of the Chamber of Commerce, from Mr. Harris over at Buffalo Bills, and of course, there's also the argument or the notion of fifty percent is not being adequate for anything. Fifteen, fifteen dollars per hour is adequate for North Dakota, perhaps, or Montana, who knows, Cincinnati. It certainly is not adequate for the Bay Area. The Bay Area living wage has to be got a heck of a lot more. If I had a business like Amazon, I would ensure that my employees in the city of the Bay Area were paid that living wage, not to afford to live in, whether it's Pima or Blackhawk or Hayward or San Leandro or Berkeley. But we unfortunately, I don't have that business. You know, that's, that's the other aspect to this whole thing, that the C E O from P G N E gets close to ten million dollars. We all know what the owners, C E Os of Yahoo and Facebook and Amazon get, and that's obscene because they really are not helping out the working class. And so we're discussing, I mean, nationwide is what, seven ninety-five or ninety-seventy-five? So we're, right now, we're at eleven, and eventually, we'll get to fifteen. The community is correct on this one. The community, and my daughter is part of it, the community needs a raise. Whether we go twenty-three or twenty-two, that's up to staff to decide, or at least study and then come back to it with a recommendation. So I think that community-wise, the fact that it would go to fifteen dollars per hour, it would be helped, but it's certainly not going to be the homebuyer raise, it's not going to be the Nike or Michael Jordan facilitator for tennis shoes, it's just going to be helpful for a better living, certainly not the living that we should have in our Bay Area, because we're, we're the most expensive area in the United States, and that's difficult. Anyway, and there were five questions. Can I go with a yes on all of them? Can I go July twenty for question number two? So go ahead and study this and talk to everybody, and then come back to us and let us know what is decided or what you could recommend. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Marquez.
Thank you, Mayor. So before I dive into my response, I am in support of this, I'll answer all the questions. But one thing I do feel is very, very important that we all acknowledge is that this is going to improve life circumstances for many people in our community, but at the same time, I feel like we all have a responsibility to do our part and shop locally. So I want to put a plug in that we've really got to stop with online shopping. I know the younger generation prefers that, but if we could focus, you know, majority of your spending should be here in Hayward. We just opened a brand-new library. We're going to build a brand-new community center here on the corner. This council's working really, really hard to provide services to the public, but we can't do that alone, and we need your revenue. So before I get into my answers, I just want to encourage us all to be mindful. I do appreciate my colleague, Councilmember Zermania, who says, shop Hayward, Hayward on. He's been saying that since the first time I met him, so I want to encourage all of us to do the same. So to answer the questions, I'm in support of an accelerated minimum wage with the July first deadline. I don't believe there should be any exemptions or exceptions. And in terms of enforcement, how many staff individuals, this is a question to staff, is this one, two positions? I know we're costing out about a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars per new employee with benefits. That's the entire package, that's what it costs in terms of pension, medical. So would this be one staff, two staff? How many would it require to monitor?
I think it'll depend on the direction we get from council, because then we can identify if there, you know, if there's a whole lot of exemptions that the council wants to put in place, obviously, that would probably require more complicated enforcement. So I think once we hear from the council this evening, we'll, we'll be able to get a better sense of what the, the costs for staff.
So we'll have that analysis and a comparison versus a contract worker? And if we do go the contract route, who does that work?
I wasn't going to, I wasn't going to answer that question. I just wanted to add on is that it also, if we, if we essentially catch up to the state and then kind of stop with the state, then we might not have to hire someone full-time because then the state essentially forces after that date. Whereas if we do something for a couple of years that's different, then it's more likely we'll be able to contract out because.
It'll be in limited duration.
It'll be in limited, limited duration. So I just want to make sure you understand that. Do you, Catherine, do you have the answer to the other question about who?
Yeah, so many of the cities on the Peninsula and the South Bay have actually contracted with the city of San Jose. They have an entire department that does wage enforcement. And so because most cities do it on a complaint basis, the city of San Jose is willing to take on those contracts with individual cities and then take, do that. Otherwise, we'd have to do some research to see who else is out there and doing that sort of enforcement.
Okay. And then in terms of the community engagement plan and stakeholders, I think that's a fairly comprehensive list. I think where we're going to have some real challenges are the monolingual speakers in our communities, small business owners. So we need to put a tailored approach, and I would recommend the door-to-door approach and be respectful of what type of business they're operating. You don't want to show up at a specific restaurant during their peak time, right? So we have to be very respectful and mindful of that. So, and then as much community engagement, and assuming that we have consensus, would this come back to us in November, December? And then when would we vote on this? I just, I kind of want to understand the time. I know you can't really answer that because we all have it weighed in, but assuming there's consensus, what's an ideal timeframe?
Assuming there's consensus, I think we'd try and aim to bring something back to the council in December or January, depending on what options. Obviously, if it's accelerated and the July option is chosen by the council, we'd want to come back sooner because that would require a lot more outreach to let businesses know that that's what the council is pursuing. But if it's just the year acceleration, which would, then it would start January of twenty twenty-one, then we have a little bit more time to come back with the actual ordinance.
Okay. And so basically, what I was speaking to, based off the staff presentation, the report, it's alternative one, correct? Just to, so we're all following the same language?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Excuse me, sorry. Can I just add one thing? If we do end up going door-to-door or something like that, it may take us a little longer. December is tight for that kind of outreach, so we may, it may be January, February before we can come back, depending on the level of outreach that we need to do.
And I'm not intending to get to every business. I know we're going to send notification through mail-in as well with all the business license, but just a good effort. Like, we pretty much have a good sample size of the type of industries in our community, and I want to just make sure that they're targeted, when we meet with them one-on-one, encourage them, spread this information, pass it on five, ten different counterparts. I don't expect staff to get to everybody. Thank you.
So this has been a long time coming from my perspective. I think the first referral I made was back in January of 2014 to increase the minimum wage locally. And I do want to thank my colleagues for supporting it. The last time I made it in 2018, I believe, or late 2017, I don't remember. But I appreciated the support, and I'm glad we're having the conversation. I think this is long overdue. I wish we had done this, you know, five years ago when I first brought it up. I especially want to highlight a piece of this that I find most offensive, and that are, that is the, these large multinational corporations, fast food chains, you know, the Walmarts and the hotel chains of the world, that are making billions of dollars a year in profit while paying many, if not most, of their workers far too little. It is one thing for a struggling local business owner to say, look, you know, it's challenging for me to make ends meet and pay folks more. I have sympathy for that. I do not have sympathy for large multinational corporations making billions of dollars on the backs of workers that are earning eleven dollars an hour. That is shameful. It is wrong. And I think that is the most, that is the top priority for me, forcing those kinds of businesses to pay more, a living wage, fifteen dollars an hour, as soon as we can get there. I support alternative one as sort of the fastest, you know, way to get there. I'm most focused on those larger companies, you know, twenty-five and up. I think that is the top priority. I would be willing to consider an exemption for local sit-down restaurants where they have a lot of tips, a lot of folks earning tips, because that's, you can't count that towards a minimum wage, because some of those folks are earning a lot more than, than fifteen. And so if, if it's needed to, you know, to get this passed and to get community support, I can live with that. It's the folks earning eleven dollars an hour to serve me a two-dollar hamburger that just makes my blood boil. That's just wrong, right? So, you know, if there are to-be exemptions, they should be for local mom-and-pops, small businesses, folks that are, you know, struggling in their own way, not for those big corporations. I will leave it to staff to come up with the exact, you know, right language to strike that balance, but hopefully, it's clear what I'm, what I'm targeting, and hopefully, my colleagues will agree with that as well. And the sooner we do this, the better. I, you know, I'd love to have this come back in December or early January to pass it so that it can take effect in July with, you know, six months, July first with six months of lead time. I do think we need to give people a little bit of time to adjust. And I'll be interested in seeing how the stakeholder communication goes, you know, around that, you know, the small restaurants. Other cities that have gone really high and have applied to small local restaurants have lost a lot of those restaurants, and I'm not sure that's the right way to go, especially when a lot of those restaurants have employees making a significant amount in tips. So I'm, that's the exemption that I'm interested in hearing more about and considering more. I think that's it, but thank you all. I appreciate the council and the staff for bringing this forward. I'm sorry. Oh, oh, I don't, I don't have a strong feeling about the enforcement mechanism. I'd be fine contracting that out for a couple of years in the hopes that we'll sort of, we'll, we'll let the state catch up with us and this doesn't become a permanent task for city staff to carry out. So thank you for that prompt. Thank you.
All right. So let's see. So I share, so I appreciate the comments of those who've spoken before me, and I share Councilmember Mendel's outrage about folks making a billion dollars while the coworkers make a pittance. I don't think minimum wage ordinances get at that. I would love to work on that, the disparity between the top and the frontline workers. I think that's a different thing. It may be a state thing. If there's something we can do at the city level, really open to that. So my challenge here is that the minimum wage, and I'll speak to my position on tonight's proposal in a minute, my challenge is that, that this, that we lose jobs when we do minimum wage work, which exacerbates the problem, that a lot of the money doesn't end up in the wage earner's pocket, is a problem. And so it feels a little, I get the intent and the passion behind it. How we get there is my challenge. Is this the way to get there? I don't know. But, but it is what is before us, so that is what I will comment on tonight. So thank you for your work to try and address issues. I know Mayor and other council members have been speaking on this, so I appreciate all of that, and the city staff's work on this as well. So let me go to the questions. You know, like I said, I have a challenge with accelerating what's already in place. I might be willing to do it if I have the data. The data piece that I'm missing is the job loss piece. So I would ask that that be understood more. So I would ask that that be understood more. Maybe we get to that by the exemption that Councilmember Mendel is talking about, locally-owned food service industries, you know, where are the, where are the pieces that this hits the hardest? I want to understand that. Because as much as I want everybody in our community to be able to stay in our community and earn wages that help themselves and their families, I don't know that this does it, and I'm afraid of losing what we have. So before I can say for sure that I can support, I can support the intent entirely, I want to understand the impact a little bit more, so I ask for that. You know, my inclination, if we did go forward, would be to give it a year, to do all the outreach and the understanding, and give our business owners time to get to that next level. That's not the supportive hearing, and so, you know, I'll defer to, somewhat to staff in terms of what are we hearing from the community? You know, if going in six months rather than 12 months, if this moves forward, if that's really gonna unsettle things, or it's, it's coming anyway. What I do hear from a lot of our businesses is they're already paying over, they're paying the minimum 15 or more because our housing costs are so high and they can't retain employees. We'll talk more about housing costs in the next item, so I won't labor that point right now. You know, we talked about exemptions, enforcement, you know, if these are skills that the city staff would have value in learning, they'd great. If this is really a short-term thing, then probably contracting makes sense, or a short or limited-term employee, but probably contract. And the community engagement is a really great list. I appreciate all of that. Couple other areas that, I'm not sure if the nonprofit networks were on that list, but that would be, we have two of those in town. There's also gonna be the funding meeting for the community grants process. A lot of the folks will be there. If it's not too confusing to, to give people some information about that, that would be a thing. And then also the university and the college, both as, those are populations, the students are employees in our community. And also, we know sometimes for some universities, what the workers at the university make get impacted by this issue. And so I think listening to them as both large-scale employers and sources of employees in our community would be important. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rohab?
Thank you. You know, I, I have some clarifying questions, and if you guys don't mind answering some of the questions I had. One, do we know who often works minimum wage jobs? That wasn't very clear in the staff report.
No data. So historically, in a lot of studies, some of the studies that were mentioned today as well, seniors, teenagers, and students tend to work these jobs to make ends meet. I also want to say that, you know, we heard two studies that were talked about, but also MIT has a living wage calculator that is being utilized by a wide variety of companies, including IKEA. And they believe, in my research, that Hayward for a living wage of one person without children is $18.73. That's significantly higher than the $15 we're fighting about. I also wanted to know, you know, there was a reference to the living wage ordinance in Hayward. When was the last time we reviewed that?
It's been a while since I've been here nine years, and I don't, I don't believe that we have reviewed it comprehensively during that time.
Yeah, since 1999. So in regards to the CPI, there is some debate as to what CPI is, the Consumer Price Index. In the staff report, it says 3.5%. Sometimes I hear 2%. What is that? If you guys can explain where, where that number is picked up from?
So the CPI number can adjust annually. It's based on several calculators, factors that go into the calculation, and it's, for the CPI for minimum wage, it's done at a state level. The cap at 3.5 means that you may have a Consumer Price Index increase that's larger than 3.5%. However, the state minimum wage increase is capped at 3.5. So while inflation may be higher than that 3.5, the minimum wage could not increase more than 3.5% each year.
Thank you. And, you know, I was reading in the staff report, and there is, mention a lot of stakeholders. By, by any chance, can you share, based on the staff report, who are the stakeholders that you reached out to, to develop this report?
So the stakeholders that we have listed in the staff report, those are the, who we would like to do the outreach following the recommendation tonight. For stakeholders developing the staff report, we reached out to other cities in the Bay Area that have looked at doing the minimum, increasing the minimum wage. So Redwood City, Mountain View, San Mateo, those were some of the leaders that were some of the front-runners increasing the minimum wage.
Okay, did we...
We modeled up to their process.
Did we meet with the Chamber of Commerce?
We did a presentation to the Chamber Government Relations Committee, just simply to highlight that the, and give them a heads-up that the issue was gonna be on the agenda for this evening.
Okay, but did we reach out to any employee groups, or any, are there any employee groups that we talked to?
No, no, we have not. I mean, our goal was to get feedback from council on the general alternatives scheme that we're proposing, and then have a better idea of those schemes, and then start, begin our robust outreach program.
Got it, thank you. In regards to, you know, the timeline, I saw that we have alternative one and alternative two, both roughly about one year prior to the state, you know, 2023 at $15. My question is, why aren't we able to accelerate that even faster?
So we could go faster and do more prior to the state law, and that could be a recommendation from the council. These were just some alternatives that staff put together. We do think the July date is kind of the fastest that we could go for getting the initial increase to allow our businesses, one, to adjust their financial system, since this is the first time that many of the businesses are hearing about it tonight, and because there is adjustments that they may need to make internally to have that increased wage if they had not already been planning for it. But we could make that increase greater if that's the direction of the council provides.
And I personally would prefer that primarily because by 2020 in July, Alameda, Berkeley, Emeryville, San Leandro, and others will be at $15 or greater. So we are far behind the eight ball in this particular thing. I also want to state, let's say that we hit the $15 mark, how many residents would be bumped up over the poverty line, considering that, based on the staff report, 10.5% are living below the poverty line?
We don't have that data tonight, but we could analyze that.
Okay. And the staff report also stated that there's about 400, 4,281 businesses with a license in Hayward. Do we consider more businesses operating in Hayward?
Do we consider that there are more than the 4,000?
So it was stated that 4,281 businesses have a license in Hayward to operate?
That's correct.
The way the staff report was written was almost as if there may be a couple more businesses that we can't account for, or is that...
That's entirely possible. Yeah, that's the number that has listed, that is listed in their business license database that actually has an employee. There are other businesses that operate that might be owner, operate their home-based businesses that might not be captured in that 4,900 number.
Do they not require a license, or is there some...
They have, they have a business license, it's just under their business license, they do not have any additional employees that would be subject to the minimum wage.
Okay, perfect. As far as the enforcement piece, I definitely would prefer a consultant. It's a little bit easier, it's a little bit faster. I also think that when we talk about reaching out to some of these businesses, simply a letter, I think will do just fine as well as our outreach efforts, but an initial letter at 50 cents a letter would cost roughly about $2,140. Three times mailing a letter in a faster period of time, because I'm advocating for a faster $15 an hour process, it would equate to about $6,421. The reason why I'm adding these numbers is because we waive fees and fund, based on staff time and much more, just even for a downtown street party, to be roughly $5,000. So I think we can invest in something that would actually benefit a lot of people for a long term. I also wanted to question, what is the word, adequate timing? What do you consider adequate timing? That's very vague to me. 30 days or 60 days is like an eviction notice. So are we talking about three years of adequate timing?
Well, in our, in staff's research of other cities who have raised minimum wage, most cities that we looked at had, had given businesses one to three years in advance notice to get, to get their business process and plans in place. So that would be along the lines of what we think would be adequate, given the experience of other cities.
Okay, and I appreciate that answer. I personally think 30 days to 60 days is enough time, considering that's how much we tell people to pack their bags and leave their homes. So I think that we can accelerate that, and again, information, social media, postcards, the whole nine can work out in that, in that sense. In regards to the exemption, I would like to make our policies vary across the board. I do agree with 25 employees or less can be at a little, the one-year slower rate. I do think that that's beneficial. And then at the same time, I, I do want to state, I do want the faster process. I'd like it, you know, to start in January 1st, 2020. I'd like that to be a lot faster, or at least the bump up, the tick-up, it's enough months to inform folks of that first dollar increase. For me, should the city, the exemptions I answered, enforcement, I do believe a consultant is adequate. I also think that we work with a lot of vendors that actually do provide some of these services in regards to enforcement and so forth. And the community engagement plan, I personally think that, I don't want to take any more time, any, any more studies, any more, anything like that. I'd like to accomplish a lot of what we're doing in a very short timeframe, conversations to be done faster, and whether that's our email system through our public relations folks, whether that's a survey done, I think that we can kind of hit those marks. I believe our email system's pretty robust, our social media's pretty robust. I don't think that we need to waste any more time. So that's my two cents on this, and thank you.
And Councilmember Rohab, I just wanted to point out that we did actually use those, we have an email database, about 70,000 emails, that notification of this discussion on the minimum wage this evening was sent out to, was on all of the city's social media channels. So it wasn't that we just reached out to the chamber, there was a lot of outreach.
No, I appreciate that, thank you. I'm saying more, and we can utilize these particular avenues to announce that we're moving forward with this plan or that plan.
Well, good evening. Thank you. I'm the last one to talk on this item. And so I'm gonna start off with a comment that I, that I, that will grab everybody, particularly for staff and for the city manager. All of our priorities that we've set for the next three years, I'd like to have them all done by January 1st, 2020. I didn't get a big laugh. Apparently I didn't get a big laugh. I didn't, I can't see the city manager.
Well, I'm smiling, there's some, there's some concerned smiles.
And, and Madam City Manager, that was a joke. I wanna sort of couch my comments in a, in a couple of, in a couple of ways before I answer the questions. You know, one is, I don't think anybody in this room wants Buffalo Bills to close. I like Buffalo Bills. I've been, been eating, I've been eating Buffalo Bills for a long time, been drinking Buffalo Bills for a long time. And, and I think, you know, there's value in neighborhood, you know, small neighborhoods, down restaurants like that. We don't want our favorite neighborhood restaurants to close. We certainly don't want Cecil's to close, at least I don't. I don't know how you guys feel about it, but I don't want, I don't want Cecil's to close over on Tennesse. Zenitas, I don't think we're gonna let Zenitas close. And so I, I, so I just wanna, sort of, when we talk about this increase in minimum wage, it, you know, our small businesses and our small family-owned businesses, you know, there's this fear that they're gonna be impacted, they'll lose jobs and potentially have to close. And so I wanna tell the folks that are here, that are coming from those types of businesses, that, that we're gonna keep mindful of that. We don't want our neighborhoods to be blighted for, you know, and we certainly don't want that to happen. So I wanna make that, make that comment. I also want to emphasize and really stress the importance of shopping locally. This is, you know, we have to shop locally. And I was, I was sort of struck by this comment about how millennials don't make enough money to go and sit down restaurants. And I just did a quick, just a cursory Google search of this. Millennials, in fact, I think if, what I saw here from the Public Policy Institute of California, PPIC, millennials make more, they earn more money today than any other generation for them. And so I wanna sort of, we wanna be careful how we, how we explain that. And so...
Let me just fact-check that.
The California, the Public Policy Institute of California. So, so with that said, let me, you know, so what I, what I want to say is, is do other cities with equally fast-rate minimum wage increase, do we know if their economies are similar to Hayward economies? Do we know that? In terms of like, small business, their makeup of downtown, and so forth?
Staff has not performed that analysis at this time.
Okay. When, when staff comes back to us with that, I'd like to, I'd like for us to look at what other downtown economies look like. And I'm not, you know, I know there's a lot of cities that you analyzed here, but, you know, if you can take maybe like Berkeley, or, well, no, maybe Berkeley's the wrong one. Yeah, San Leandro, you know, look at some of the other cities that are similar to ours, and sort of look at, sort of compare a little bit. You know, look at perhaps how they are adjusted to this change, okay? When... When the, so I know there's a lot of exceptions. I did some reading on this over the weekend, and I saw that many of the minimum wage policies, there's a lot of exceptions, number of employees, nonprofits, and et cetera. And I'm, I'm interested to see what, you know, businesses are most affected by a minimum wage increase. Are we really talking about, I mean, are we really targeting these multinational, multi-billion-dollar companies like what was mentioned up here? Or are they small mom-and-pop restaurants, small business-owned restaurants? And because, just a cursory observation, a lot of nonprofit organizations that are excluded from a minimum wage policy, that's where most of the lowest-paying wage earners work. And so I'm, you know, we're, on one hand, we're helping people through increase in a minimum wage, but on the other hand, there's folks that we want to, you know, there's folks like in the nonprofit sector that are some of the lowest-paid people, you know, in, you know, in our community. So, you know, I want to be, you know, I want to see how that, what the impacts are, right? Let's see. In the past, I know we've put together mock paychecks. If we can maybe mock up maybe three different examples of an increase in a minimum wage, maybe a mock paycheck of a, of a, of a fast-food wage earner, a mock-up of a, of a restaurant... maybe a mock paycheck of a of a fast-food wage earner, a mock-up of a restaurant, sit-down restaurant wage earner, perhaps? I don't know. I mean, find three contrasting paychecks that would be impacted by a minimum wage. I'd be interested to see that. So, lastly, the question. You know, should we, you know, you know, increase the minimum wage faster than the state? It seems like everybody is on that path up here. You know, if staff can come back with a plan to look, you know, how fast we can implement it, I'd be willing to look at that and comment on that. You know, when should the increase begin? I know everybody up here seems to be in 2020. You know, I'm sure when this comes back to us, I'd be interested to see what all the stakeholders feel about this. I know there's a list of stakeholders that you have in the in the report. I know you're going to have a strategy. I just really want to make sure that what we do is agreeable. I know it may not be agreeable across the board, but, you know, if, you know, I just don't want, my main concern is I don't want this to negatively impact, you know, some of our smallest, or not even our smallest businesses, but those businesses that are right at the cusp of sort of, you know, of this, someone said twenty-five employees, someone said thirty employees. I mean, if someone's at thirty employees, and wherever we draw that line, I want to see how it impacts impacts them. And so, that's what I want to see. Should there be any exceptions? I'd be, I'm interested to see what the chamber comes up with. I'll be interested to see what what comes out of the stakeholder meetings with some of our smaller retailers and our smaller businesses. And, but I, you know, generally, I agree with the concept of the exceptions. That's why I want to see what the, you know, when we, some of the policies that I've looked at, the exceptions are so surgically made that, you know, I don't know who we're helping anymore sometimes, and that's what I'm concerned, that's what I'm concerned about. Should it be enforced by an outside agency? I'll leave that up for staff to figure out the best possible way. And the community engagement, yes, of course, I want to see community engagement. I looked at the plan. I just want to make sure, my main concern is, whatever we do and whatever we come up with, I want to make sure that we help the people we intend to help, and we support the people that we intend to support. And I don't want to see a sort of a blanket policy where we have to come back shortly thereafter and clean up. And that's why sometimes, you know, if we need to take a little, some time to figure that out, then let's take the time to figure that out. But generally speaking, you know, this is something that I'm supportive of, and I know staff will bring back something as good. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I'll just weigh in. For someone who started out my career as a teenager, making fifty cents an hour babysitting, well, fifteen dollars would have sounded incredible to me, but I, of course, realize that things are a lot more expensive now. And also, I know when I was earning that kind of money, I was not trying to totally support myself. So I think a lot depends on, you know, the individual situation and where you are in life. But, and I know, I can, I just can feel how hard it is for some people now to do, you know, to even find a place to live or, you know, eat regularly on some of the compensation being paid. So I, you know, the state had done this years ago, they had a plan, I think in fairness to the businesses, you know, they do have to plan ahead. So I came in here tonight with the idea that the January, the increase of two dollars on January first, 2021 would be the way to go. That gives staff and the businesses a lot more time to, you know, let people know and vet it. I'm hearing, I think, well, yeah, I think I'm hearing pretty strong support for moving that up to July 2020, and the staff did put that out there, so I think that they, you know, have to think that they can do that, too. I do worry, though, about the, you know, what was stated in the staff report about that not being the time of year that businesses make these changes, and that there could be confusion. And, you know, I don't think we want to do something that's just going to make everybody confused. So I have some concerns about starting in July. I don't think it can be done sooner than that. That's not, that's not realistic. We're not even going to vote on this tonight. It has to come back to us before we do anything. And, you know, staff has a whole lot of other things on their plate. So, so it does sound like, though, that there is more, more support for the July first one-dollar increase, followed by six months later, another dollar increase in January 2021, and then going ahead. I, you know, this whole thing, having different minimum wages in different neighboring towns, if I were a business, I would be very confused about that, how businesses have, businesses and all of us. I think we all ought to gather the state program by the time the full fifteen-plus annual CPI increases go into effect in 2023, right, 2023. But, you know, I can suggest, we live in a very expensive part of California, and for now, I think going ahead with this is a good idea. And so where I might make the changes, let's look at the number of employees and consider raising that threshold for, you know, because I do agree with the plan to ease it a little bit for the smaller employers, and maybe you might even want to raise that number from twenty-six to, you know, fifty or something. Look at that to see if that will help, especially some of the smaller, you know, the restaurant businesses that we've heard about, the businesses that are populating our downtown right now that might be really struggling, but that's a good overall thing for the city to have storefronts built.
All of the, not used downtown.
And the, yes, I know. I heard that comment, and it is actually right, throughout our city, all of our, when I say downtown, I mean our commercial districts throughout the city. And, and I would especially, I think we have reached out and to continue to reach out to the business community, but also to the nonprofit community, the social service community, the faith community, and that's where you might hear more of the stories about the impacts on actual people and how people are really struggling and what this might do for them. So with that, those are my comments. Do you have any questions of us, or do you have what you need to come back? Councilmember Zermania.
Yes, I have a comment for our audience today. As we were going to the questions, one of my colleagues posted questions to our staff. Our staff responded. After the response, there was laughter in our audience. That's being disrespectful of our staff. So I would appreciate respecting our staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Zermania. Does our staff have any questions?
No, thank you.
Or do you have what you need to go back?
Yes, thank you.
Anybody else on council want to comment? Okay, with that, thank you very much, and we will move on. And, well, I guess just some timeline of when staff thinks they might bring this back for a full vote.
I think based on what we heard tonight, I think there is, it does seem like there's a majority to pursue an ordinance and acceleration of minimum wage ordinance, and so we will need to do the outreach that we talked about. I mean, I think we're going to try to do that as quickly as possible. We have the holidays, everything else going on. I mean, I think it's most likely we'll see what we can do for December, but I think that's ambitious. We want to be really robust about our community outreach, and there's a number of additional stakeholders that were added, additional suggestions. So I would say early next year would probably be the fastest, and we will try to do it as fast as we can. We do want to make sure, in all the other cities we talked to, did very robust community outreach, given the potential impacts to businesses and employees. So we'll be looking at, most likely, early next year, we will try to do it as fast as we can.
And if it comes back to us early next year, will that give staff enough time to implement it by the July first?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you all. Good work. Now we're going to move on to item number five, which is a feasibility analysis for residential fees and park impact fee nexus study. And from this, for this, we're going to eventually hear from our Development Services Director, Laura Simpson, but we're going to start with our city manager, Ms. Massey.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to take a moment to do some context setting for this agenda item. So this evening, the council is going to hear a follow-up discussion about park impact fees. Park impact fees are fees that are paid by mostly in Hayward new residential development to help fund the construction of new park facilities in the community. And as we've already heard a lot this evening, and as the council has been talking about a lot over the past couple of years, you know, really, this runs some parallel with the city's discussion regarding barriers to housing production. We've heard from a lot of different developers, we've heard from a lot of different organizations about this balance that needs to be struck between the costs of building housing, but then we also, the council as a policy-setting body for this community, needs to make sure that there are appropriate infrastructure and amenities in the community. So there is a balance. And so what staff has tried to do this evening, and what you'll see, is really to take those into consideration. We will be bringing back a more comprehensive discussion for the council on the barriers to housing production, which we'll look at a number of different factors. And we have tried to incorporate some of the thinking around that into the recommendations in the staff report this evening. So I just wanted to set that context, recognizing that there's this, these competing interests about trying to reduce more housing, but also making sure that the residents in our community have appropriate infrastructure, services, parks, and other things to make sure that their quality of life is high when they are living in our community. So with that, I will turn it over to our Director of Development Services, Laura Simpson.
Thank you. I'd just like to introduce our Associate Planner, Elizabeth Blanton, who has been working on this project, and she will provide presentation this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm Elizabeth Blanton, an Associate Planner. As you all know, the city has been working with a consultant, Community Attributes, to prepare a park impact fee nexus study in order to update the city's parking lieu fees and the related ordinance. When we came to you last in June, Sarah Bowser, our Planning Manager, presented the details of that park nexus study. Since then, we've conducted some additional research, and we've gotten additional feedback that I'll go over tonight in my presentation. Based on all of this that we'll talk about, staff has prepared a series of recommendations for the council to consider and then provide feedback to us on this evening. So as a quick refresher, and I know we've gone over this before, the city's park fees have not changed since 2003. Park fees are currently eleven thousand nine hundred fifty-three dollars for single-family detached units, eleven thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars for single-family attached units, and nine thousand six hundred fifty-three dollars for multifamily units. A no annual adjuster was included when these fees were adopted back in 2003, so as a result, they've not kept pace with inflation and rising land values. Now, if the city had incorporated an annual adjuster based on the Consumer Price Index, the table on the right here shows what those fees would have been today. As you can see on the chart, single-family detached would be over seventeen thousand dollars, single-family attached park fees would be over sixteen thousand dollars, and multifamily fees would be just over fourteen thousand dollars. So the park nexus study, which is included as attachment four to this agenda item, establishes the maximum allowable park fees that the city would be legally justified in charging new development. These fees are calculated based on the current level of park service that's provided in the city. So when we say level of service, we're talking about the numbers of acres of parkland per thousand residents. Secondly, they're also calculated based on the cost of acquiring new land for parks and then actually developing those parks. So as you can see from the chart on the screen, based on the nexus study, when looking at units by bedroom count, the maximum allowable fees that the city would be legally justified in charging for park fees would range from six thousand two hundred seventy-seven dollars for zero bedrooms or a studio unit, all the way up to forty-three thousand sixty-five dollars for a dwelling unit, a home that has four or more bedrooms. Of course, and we'll go over this, council will have the option of setting park fees below this maximum allowable amount. So this is not to say this is what the park fees have to be, it's just saying that legally we could not justify going above this. Back in May, staff presented the park nexus study calculations to CEDC, so I just want to start with a quick reminder of what we heard at that point. Some general points of consensus were that park fees should be minimal or not at all on non-residential development, so an emphasis on continuing to primarily assess fees on residential development for parks. We also heard from CEDC to assess park fees by bedroom count rather than by type of development. So in the past, we've assessed park fees based on if it's a single-family home, an attached single-family home, or multifamily. So we've heard feedback to say, instead, let's go ahead and break that down by bedroom level. We also heard that for ADUs, which are accessory dwelling units, park fees should be dropped down to the studio rate, no matter how big an ADU is, no matter if it has one or two bedrooms in it. And then finally, we heard this above all else, park fees, while they should be increased, should be kept reasonable. They should not be increased to the maximum allowable, we should figure out some sort of a reasonable rate in the interim. Now, in addition to feedback from CEDC, in June, as you know, we presented to both council and the hard board, and the hard board of directors got back to staff with some additional comments. So here is a summary of the kind of general points of consensus that they came to. They said that park fees should be set at the maximum allowable rate, as that is the cost of acquiring land and developing new parks. They said no types of residential development should be exempt from park fees, as again, any reduction in fees would reduce to, or would equal a reduced level of service. They agreed with CEDC that fees should be assessed by bedroom count, and that ADU fees should be reduced to the studio level. And finally, they expressed an openness to the idea of allowing credits towards projects' park fees for private parkland that's provided as part of the development, as long as that parkland is publicly accessible. Now, in addition to these two groups, we also held a meeting with developer stakeholders, so we invited people representing different residential developers in the city to a meeting so we could also get their input at this early stage. We heard a number of different things at this meeting, and again, this is just kind of summarizing some general points of consensus. First of all, developers were concerned that if we're raising park impact fees now, there could also be new impact fees coming in the future, so just a little concerned about the uncertainty of that landscape. Secondly, they wanted to point out when we're comparing ourselves in Hayward to other communities, that we need to keep in mind difference meeting home values in these different jurisdictions. They were open to the idea of assessing fees by bedroom count, but pointed out that this could incentivize the reduction of smaller units, so housing units that have studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, things like that. They agreed with CEDC that there should be minimal or no park fees for non-residential. One person pointed out in the developer stakeholder meeting that with our new industrial regulations update, we're already increasing the requirements in terms of open space and employee amenities, so that's kind of captured in that, and we don't want to double-charge folks. And then finally, there was some concern about how is this going to be implemented? Our existing projects would be grandfathered in, and if there is an increase, they recommended that it was a phased increase, so maybe it's increased to a certain level after year one, and then, you know, a higher level after that. So in addition to the, to talking to all of these different folks, we also did some research. Council asked us to look at how City of Hayward's current fees compared to those of different jurisdictions. We've done that research, and I'll get to that in a couple of slides as we go through our recommendations. So let's go ahead and jump into those. Staff's first recommendation is that the city continue to assess park impact fees only on residential development. Not only did CEDC and the developer stakeholders express hesitation about assessing anything more than the token nominal fee on non-residential development, but we know that the city has faced difficulty in attracting some types of faced difficulty in attracting some types of commercial development over recent years. So in order not to hinder any commercial development, staff recommends not introducing a new park fee on non-residential development at this time. Secondly, staff recommends that park impact fees are assessed by bedroom count rather than by product type. CEDC and the Hard Board will favor this approach, as the developer stakeholders know, of course, they did point out that this could result in incentivizing smaller units. Now, third, staff recommends reducing park impact fees below the maximum allowable established by the nexus study. This recommendation is consistent with what we heard from CEDC and stakeholders to keep these fees reasonable, increase them, but keep them at a reasonable level. So staff specifically recommends increasing fees to a level that's 50% below the maximum allowable fees. So in this chart, you can see that in the column that's all the way to the right that's highlighted in bold. So this would mean that park fees would range from $3,138 for a studio unit or for an ADU, all the way up to $21,532 for a dwelling unit with four or more bedrooms. So this would represent an increase in park fees from the current fees for three and four bedroom units, which we typically see in like townhomes and single-family developments, and a decrease in fees for zero to two bedroom units, which we more typically see in multifamily projects. Staff feels that this is an appropriate approach, given the current development landscape in Hayward, and what I mean by that is that a sensitivity analysis conducted by our consultant, Community Attributes, has indicated that multifamily residential projects are only a marginally feasible product type, even under the current park fee schedule. And this is due to the high cost of construction and the inability to garner high enough rents. Now, on the other hand, Hayward, as you know, is currently seeing a lot of townhome and single-family development. An analysis has shown that this type of development is feasible under our current fee structure and would remain feasible with increased park fee. In terms of level of service, which is shown at the bottom here, assessing fees at a rate of 50% below the maximum allowable would result in 4.5 acres of new parkland per thousand new residents. Now, we also, you'll notice there's another column here with a 35% reduction. If the Council would like to entertain a more significant increase in park fees, this table also shows what that might look like. So another option, if we wanted to set the fees at 35% below the maximum allowable, it would range from $4,080 for zero bedrooms or studios and ADUs, up to $27,992 for four-plus bedrooms. And you can see here, similarly, the LOS, the Level of Service, would also increase with this. Now, as I mentioned earlier, another option could even be, you know, maybe it's a phased approach, maybe Council decides now it's appropriate to set it at the 50% reduction level, and then later we want to lengthen it again. These are all things that we're retaining with staff, and these are things that we would like your feedback on this evening. Now, to help these recommended increases in context, we compared Hayward's fees to those of neighboring jurisdictions. So this chart in front of us compares impact fees for parks, capital facilities, traffic, and fire for a hypothetical four-bedroom detached, single-family home. So as you can see right now, Hayward's current park fee comes in at the very bottom, we're at the bottom of this chart currently. But if we charged the maximum allowable fee, we would shoot up to the top of the chart. Neither one of those feels particularly appropriate, so we see here that staff's recommendations of either going with a 50% reduction from the maximum allowable fee, or 35% reduction from the maximum allowable fee, would put Hayward closer to the middle of the pack, but still a little bit below average compared to the other jurisdictions. Now, as some of our developer stakeholders raised, okay, well, we're potentially going to be considering other fees such as a transportation impact fee in the near future. What would that look like? So here, we've added a bar, we obviously have not done this nexus study yet, we don't know exactly what that transportation impact fee would look like, but roughly estimating that it's somewhere in the neighborhood of $7,000 to $8,000. You can see here where the, our recommendations of a 50% reduction or 35% reduction would be even with that added impact. So for the 50% reduction, we're still basically middle of the pack, and then for the 35% reduction, we're still competitive with some of the jurisdictions on the higher end of the chart. Now, in addition, we did the same exercise, looking at a two-bedroom apartment. So again, staff's recommendation of setting the park fee at 50% below the maximum allowable would actually lower the park fee from the current rate. So you can see the Hayward current rate is the third row from the bottom here. If we set with staff's recommended to be a 50% below the maximum allowable fees, this would actually lower the park fee for this type of development for a two-bedroom unit. If we go with a 35% reduction from the maximum allowable, it would increase the fee, but it's still on the lower end compared to some of our neighboring jurisdictions. And again, adding in our estimated hypothetical transportation fee, Hayward's overall impact fees would still remain below average. So this shows that there's still some room for additional fees in the future, even if the park impact fees are increased at this time. Now, of course, the impact fees listed on the previous charts are not inclusive of all the permitting and impact fees that projects are subject to. There's also utility fees, affordable housing fees, building permit and inspection fees, and others. So in order to do a more detailed comparison of how staff's recommended park fee increases would impact the total fees that we look at for some specific projects, we developed three project prototypes. As a reach project prototype, we calculated what Hayward's existing and proposed total fees would be, and then we compared those to what that fees would be if these projects were developed in San Leandro, Dublin, and Fremont. I should also note here, this is just a summary of the numbers from this analysis, the full detailed analysis is included in the attachments. So starting here, for the first prototype, we analyzed detached, single-family subdivisions of 100 homes, 75 four-bedroom homes and 25 three-bedroom homes. So on this side, Hayward's estimated total fees for this project based on our existing park fees are shown in the first column, while the estimated fees based on staff recommended park fees are shown in the second column, which is highlighted in yellow. Now, comparing the subtotal line across jurisdictions, you can see that Hayward's current fees are about 30% lower than San Leandro and about half of Dublin and Fremont's fees. Even with staff's recommended park fee increase, Hayward's subtotal fees still remain significantly lower than the other three communities. Now, you'll notice that we pulled out the affordable housing fees separately, and the reason we did that is because communities implement affordable housing requirements differently. So for example, while Hayward allows for an in-wood fee at Fremont, San Leandro for a project of this size requires that all affordable housing is built on-site. Dublin kind of takes a hybrid approach, they say 40% of the required affordable units can be done through fees, the rest have to be built on-site. So while when you look at the totals across the bottom, it looks like Hayward's fees are more than San Leandro, in reality, given the cost of actually constructing affordable units on-site, that is probably not necessarily the case. So kind of the apples-to-apples comparison on this chart is to look at the subtotals So the second prototype that we looked at was a mixed-use project with 100 townhomes, 54-bedroom units, and 53-bedrooms, as well as 15,000 square feet of retail. Again, here, we see very similar results to what we saw with the first prototype. Hayward's subtotal of existing fees is about 30% below San Leandro and about half of Dublin and Fremont. And again, looking at the yellow in the middle, which is showing what the fees would be with our recommended park fee, Hayward's subtotal would increase, but it's still significantly below these other communities. Finally, the third prototype we looked at was a mixed-use project with 200 apartments, so this time, 102-bedroom units, 51-bedroom units, and 50 studios, as well as about 33,000 square feet of ground floor retail. For this prototype, Hayward's existing fee subtotal is about 30% lower than San Leandro and Fremont, and about 60% lower than Dublin. With the affordable housing fees added in, Hayward's current total fees are almost half those of Dublin and Fremont. And in this case, you'll notice with staff's recommended park fees highlighted in yellow, Hayward's total fees would actually decrease slightly. And again, that's because the fees for zero-bedroom, one-bedroom, and two-bedroom units would be below what they are for our current rates. Staff feels that this is appropriate, again, because we want to encourage multifamily dwell, and given that it has more limited feasibility in Hayward. Moving on to our fourth recommendation, looking at exemptions. Staff recommends that we expand the range of affordable projects and units that would be exempt from these park fees. So currently, at the top, we can see there are four different types of development that are exempt from park fees. Senior housing that's owned or leased by a public agency, rental housing that's owned by nonprofit that's affordable to those making up to 60% of area median income, ownership housing that's developed by a public agency or nonprofit that's affordable to those making up to 95% of area median income, and then all non-residential development. Based on the feedback that we got from the developer stakeholders, and given the city's desire to incentivize affordable housing production, staff recommends that the city expand its current exemptions to include all 100% affordable projects by nonprofit developers that are affordable to households making up to 120% of the area median income. For 100% affordable projects that are by for-profit developers, we recommend a 50% reduction in fees. So that means whatever level the Council decides to set the fees at, projects that are 100% affordable by a for-profit developer, the park fees would be half of that. In addition to encourage onsite affordable units, we recommend that there's a 50% reduction in fees for any onsite affordable requirement or providing. And then finally, staff's fifth recommendation is to consider additional credits that can be counted towards the development's park fee requirements. The city's current park fee ordinance allows credits for private park and recreation areas. However, the private park areas have to meet a number of requirements. They have to be a certain size, they have to include amenities such as family picnic areas or turf playfields, playground equipment, kind of traditional parks in that sense. So staff recommends expanding this list to include a wider type of parks, including linear parks and trails, and to consider relaxing some of the requirements for square footage of what some of these amenities would need to be. Staff, though, agrees with Hard's recommendation that any parkland that's counted towards the park fee requirements needs to be publicly accessible, not just for the people of that development. With that, this concludes staff's recommendations. Based on the feedback we've received from Council tonight, we're going to work on revising the park fee ordinance, and we'll be bringing that to you hopefully later in the year. Tentatively, we're scheduled to bring the revised ordinance to the Hard Board, just for their review, in November, and then back to you guys in December. So with that, staff is happy to answer any questions that the Council may have, as well as receive your feedback on our proposed recommendations. I'll put those up.
Okay. Thank you for that exhaustive report and for all the work that we clearly, as we apologize into this. And again, this is a work session item, so I am going to start with public comment, and we do have Ms. Lee again. I hope, please say your first name for me, so I'll know how you say it.
Danby.
Danby?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, got it.
I know, it looks like Danny again all the time.
Okay.
I wanted to thank you on all the thorough work that you've done, I think that's great. However, I adhere to kind of correct one of the things that Councilmember Salinas had said earlier, because it bothers me, and as an educator, I don't like to have things, misinformation being spread. And I understand that you were, it was a very cursed research, but what you had cited was, first of all, from the Pew Research Center, not from PPIIC.
You know, I'm sorry, we are, I really can't allow you to talk on a sub, you're not addressing, are you addressing this subject about park fees?
Yes, because the park fees affect our millennial generation, and they pay the park fees.
Okay.
So, and this is part of the whole thing about, you know, millennial generation's not making enough money, and part of this is to pay the park fees, and we do use the parks as well, we, because I am part of the millennial generation. So part of the disposable income that Councilmember Salinas had cited earlier talks about the households of millennials, and he said that they are making more than any other generation previously, and that is, while statistically correct, you need to put it into context, and the reason why the households are making more is because women are allowed in the workforce now. The wage gap between men and women are decreasing, and there's a dual-income household, and that is why that statistic that you cited needs to be put into that context. And additionally, even though these dual-income households are making more, they are also saddled with more student debt and more mortgage payments with all of that, and they are also having less children because of all of these things. So I encourage you, before citing statistics and spreading this kind of misinformation, that you look into it and put it into context. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other requests to speak. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? If not, we will move on to Council comments, and we'll go ahead and start at the other end of the dais, and start with Councilmember Salinas.
Well, I know we looked at this in the CEDC, and it was a long report, but I had a couple of questions that I wanted to ask. And I know it has, we've talked about this before, but can you explain why it is more expensive to build an affordable unit than it is to build a market rate, whether it's a home, or whether it's an apartment, or a townhome? What's the, what's the formula there?
There are additional costs associated with affordable housing that relate to financing costs and the syndication of tax credits. There are additional costs in producing affordable housing. There's also service costs that are, you know, as services are wrapped into affordable housing, that's another factor, so that may be why.
Okay. Yeah, because when we, when we look at the fees that are pulled out of affordable, it's, you know, I'm always thinking, well, you know, we could get more, right, or get less, whatever the, whatever it is. But anyways, okay, that's what I wanted to ask. I know, you know, I really want to focus on my comments with number three, the recommendation of number three, keep the percentage reasonable. I know we talked about that in CEDC. You know, I think the 50% below allowable is good, and the reason why I think that is good is primarily because I think it'll keep our construction on pace, what we have already in the queue, and, and, you know, I think it will, yeah, at least keep our affordable housing prospects in the future, you know, going and built. You know, I know we talked about, you know, keeping it residential, and I do know that we've, there are, we have talked about projects in the industrial area that, you know, will have a larger, sort of a large amount of employees, and we don't know where they'll go for like lunch or something, and I know that we talked about having different types of variety of parks, or not parks, but like green areas and green spaces around their buildings, and I, and I don't know if those costs can, are incurred when they develop those, or how does that work? I mean, is that pulled out of this, or is that sort of separate when we approve those sites, or when those sites are approved?
It would be separate when those sites are approved. So with the adoption of the update to the industrial district zoning regulations, there were requirements for some of these sort of larger-scale, more campus-like industrial developments that are built, needing to provide open space and employee amenities as a part of their development, and that will be reviewed at the time, and that would not be part of this, so that would not be captured. Developers would provide this as a part of it.
I don't want to give the wrong impression that if we're not collecting the fee, that we're not building a park, or we're not building a space for, you know, recreation. And then, the other, so those are really the two points I wanted to make. You know, I think to keep the rate reasonable, you know, 50 below, 50, or 50% below the allowable is fine, and primarily because it's going to keep our construction pace, at least for housing, affordable housing on track, so that's it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Wahab?
Yeah, I appreciate your report, as always, thank you so much. I specifically wanted to ask a question, and this was just to clarify, you stated that in commercial areas, we would potentially not request park, correct? And then also in senior type of housing, correct?
Yeah, so currently, let me pull the slide up again for reference, currently, all types of non-residential development are exempt, which means we don't collect park park fees from them. In addition to that, senior housing that's owned or leased by public agencies, affordable renting up to 60% AMI, and then affordable ownership housing up to 95% AMI, we currently don't collect park fees for.
Yeah. So I'm just going to say it as like from my personal opinion, as a person who works in a building where there's like nothing but cement and so forth, like at lunchtime, I die for a park. Like I just want to sit somewhere green, right? And not be in an AC and, you know, ventilated air and so forth. So I would highly, highly recommend that workers do deserve a park and I think that it not only helps, you know, let's say the quality of life of an average worker, but also just the pretty environment. People can walk around, you know, a field of grass and, you know, smell fresh air and so forth. I think that's, that's very good for the mentality. So I would recommend that particular change and as well as for seniors. My father is a senior. He pretty much only walks around our block. We have a lot of, I live in a multifamily complex. The kids, they literally play in the street or pretty much on, in the parking lot area. They have no grass to play, you know, soccer or anything that they can do as kids, as we all did as kids, right? So I think that at least understanding that as part of the quality of life for individuals that are being kind of more smushed together and more people and more this and that, I'm a huge advocate of having a little bit more parks in the areas that we traditionally over the past couple of decades, we have not seen being built. So that is my piece of it. I also think that for, for townhomes and retail, I also think that it should be, you know, I'm okay with the 50% to start. I think that it eventually will need to grow, but I personally do think that, you know, the impact fees, the reason why this is a, like I wish that people would just build the park and not have to do the in-lu fees. Like that's the honest truth, that that should have been, you know, the number one qualifier. I do like what other cities are doing where if we build a certain type of, you know, a project that we force the developer to build some parks and some amenities that, you know, cater to the quality of life and some outdoor activities. I think across the board, I was fine with the 50%. I would like us to be better, like if we could hit that maybe even 75% and just be below the top range by 25% is something that I would personally like. And the reason why is because we do need the fees to ensure that certain areas, you know, that we can do a little bit more. So if they're going to pay in-lu fee, I want them to, this is where I want to nickel and dime them. So I, and I understand that the impact is depending on what we build and hence why I would like to apply this to commercial, not just residential. I don't think that we should ignore the commercial, like commercial properties are growing more and more, you know, as businesses are, you know, not utilizing brick and mortar, but they just need maybe an office space to do things and, you know, we have different avenues for business now. But for the most part, I was fine with the recommendations except for the fact that I'd prefer the 75% and then I'd prefer that we push the parks for seniors in commercial.
I just want to have, just quick clarification to make sure that I'm understanding your feedback. So on the percentage reduction, is it 25% reduction from maximum allowable, right? Okay, so a number that's not shown in the chart, that's what you would prefer.
Yeah, so going down rather than, and I apologize, I saw that after I said it, I knew that you guys would have that. But basically going down just like minus 25 rather than minus 75.
Okay. Sorry. Got it. Just want to make sure I understood.
Secondly, one other thing that I'll add just in response is just to point out that when park fees are collected, they're kind of put into a general bucket. Doesn't mean that, you know, for example, a senior project is not giving park fees, doesn't mean that there will not be any parks, you know, in that area. That said, I totally hear your comment that we want to make sure that enough projects are contributing so that we do have sufficient fees to provide parks in the areas.
And my concern is the more, you know, senior facilities are always designed a certain way. And I, like, you know, I hear my dad's complaints of like he can't walk further out, you know, they become, they drive less to a park, you know, they just want to walk maybe like a block or less. So I do think that it needs to be onsite for me. That's like a, almost a mandatory requirement. And then for commercial, as a person who is in a building all day, like I really just want a little bit of a park with some flowers.
And along to that point though, we're not talking about changing our requirements for development in terms of, you know, our requirements for onsite, you know, onsite open space.
Correct. So, you know, all developments are still required to provide a percentage towards, you know, onsite group open space, private open space. This is in addition to that. Typically, when you have developments of over 50 or more units, you can require that they also provide onsite parkland in addition to the zoning requirements that would require private and public open space or group open space rather. So what I'm hearing, at least from council member Wahab, is she'd like to see more of those types of projects actually providing onsite parkland in addition to the open space.
Yeah. And I just wanted to also ask, our city manager, I know that we had a conversation over the phone, a meeting a couple of days ago, is this the item that you wanted me to potentially bring?
Yeah, this would be the appropriate time to bring up the idea that you, we had talked about.
Okay, so this is, this is a conversation we had. This is, I personally don't know if this, I don't think it relates to this exactly, but when we talked about in-lu fees and so forth, so I asked our city manager about a transportation sustainability fee. And, you know, there was a little bit of kind of confusion as to what exactly that is. Now, many cities charge for developers that promote that, okay, we're going to be at a, let's say a BART station, an AC transit or, you know, a freeway exit as a transportation hub, right? We want high density at these transportation hubs. We want, you know, a certain type of housing. And I asked about a transportation sustainability fee. And the reason why I'm asking for a transportation sustainability fee to be considered for future reference and future items, which we do not have in the city of Hayward today, is primarily because of the fact that the infrastructure that when we're building some of these higher density homes and the amount of people, cars, traffic, foot traffic, you know, the amount of, you know, damage it takes on city infrastructure, it actually costs, it's projected to cost billions of dollars, not actually even millions, but like that number's extremely high because of the amount of work it takes. And we're not necessarily even planning for that yet. So I would like for us to consider that. Now, most cities do it in these transportation hubs next to a BART station. We do have two BART stations. But because we are in such a prime location with our freeways and our, you know, the two BART stations and even the overpass and so forth, I would like for the entire city of Hayward to be considered a transportation, you know, any development to have a transportation sustainability fee. That is something I'm just going to toss out there. I don't know if this relates here, but our city manager stated that I should bring it up. All right.
Okay, thank you for that. Council member Lambon?
Sure. Thank you. Okay, so again, many thanks to staff. And are we currently allowed to charge an ADU fee? And there was a bill just passed and...
We do currently charge a fee.
We currently do. Are we going to be able to in the future?
That's a good question. To be perfectly honest, staff is still working through these 18 bills that just came down last week.
Totally get that.
I know that there's a change to the utility fees. I think there's a, like it can no longer charge utility connection fees on ADUs. I'm not sure if that extends to park fees, but again...
We'll find out.
Yeah.
Okay, fair enough. Obviously, this is not a, this is again a work session, so we don't look up all the answers tonight. That's fine. So in terms of feedback, I think the bi-bedroom count is fine. The credit for land dedication or other improvements too, to council member Wahab's point about building onsite, you know, what are, if they're grading the area, much like La Vista, you know, if you're already got the bulldozer route, can you help pave the way, literally, not literally, to parks, sorry. Got lost in my metaphor there, but you know what I'm saying. Or the trails, et cetera, whether that's a dollar for dollar per amount or per rated amount, I defer to staff's expertise on, but I'm really open to, let's get them built. It's quicker to build it, just like it's quicker to build onsite affordable, it's quicker to build onsite parkland or to partner with them, you can pay us the fee now or you could just take your tractor over there, help us out with that, that kind of thing. I'm also open to some, I'm open to grandfathering in existing projects. I don't know how much phase in we need based on where we land financially, but I'm open to some of that. I know we did that for the, we had a process for that for the inclusionary housing fee and that seemed to smooth at least, you know, you may have a different experience with that, but it seemed to get us there.
Yeah. All I probably would recommend that when we do come back, and this would be something I would ask council to think about, when we do grandfather, it's best to make it as simple as possible. I think the dual dates that we incorporated with the update to the affordable housing ordinance has made things a little more complex and complicated, especially when you're dealing with construction schedules that vary and they're, you know, light and they're subject to the market conditions and those sorts of things that I think it's better to just pick a date deemed complete, approved, something that's very simple and easy to sort of monitor, whatever that is, or whether you're choosing to phase increases in. But just think about some of those things when we come back and we're talking about what types of projects we might or at what level projects should be grandfathered. Simpler the better.
Well said. Thank you. Definitely. And then I think, I think we have to, and I know this was in the feedback, and I really appreciate the chart that shows not just our fees, but what our costs are. Our housing prices are the second lowest to San Liander, and San Liander's really close to us. And so the ability to absorb the cost in the prices is less in Hayward. So I have real concerns about going to the max or even increasing our fees. That said, I am definitely in support of some kind of CPI increase that should have been there. I'm willing to have that going forward. I'm also willing to have an adjusted rates based on something that's a little easier to enforce and also, most importantly, enables us to incentivize what we want. So the fact that the 50% proposal allows us hopefully to start to incentivize the density we've been talking about needing, the affordable housing we've been talking about needing. To council member Salinas' question, you know, part of the reason that affordable housing is hard, in addition to the well said answers that you get, that city staff gave, is also we tend to sort of Christmas tree affordable housing projects. We put additional costs on them. And so to the extent that we can pull back fees to incentivize the housing that we desperately need, I think that's really important and I think it gets to not a lot of the affordability. This is not a huge feat we're talking about, but to the extent that we can hold back what we can hold back to really get at deep restricted affordable at all levels or at the spectrum of needs, I'd really be interested in that. And so, you know, I think the 50% does that. Obviously, that's the lens I'm using, so I'll continue to think about that and, you know, and keeping an eye on our revenue numbers to help us meet them. In terms of exemptions, you know, generally, I think the idea of affordable, but I don't want it to just be nonprofit developers, frankly. Market rate developers can tend to build for a less expensive per unit. And so if they are deep restricting it affordable, great, let them build it. And then also, I don't want to encourage 100% affordable. I want the complete communities where, you know, they're not all 100% affordable at one income level. And we had a project coming in that's all 100% affordable, but some of it is extremely low, low, very low. That's okay. I mean, that's better to me, but the all at one level is nice, but it doesn't get us, I think, as far as mixed income does. And I think that's it. Thank you so much.
Sorry, sharing microphones here. So first, I want to start by complimenting staff. You guys did a great job providing us with a really good set of data before we made these decisions. So Ms. Blanzen, Ms. Bowser, Ms. Simpson, thank you very much. And to anyone else on the team who worked on it, my compliments and appreciation. Excited to be talking about this. It's another one that has been online to do with us for a while. And I'm generally in favor of staff's overall recommendations, but I have a few sort of specific tweaks that I would recommend and would like to see. First, the five acres per 1,000 population, that was, remind me, was that the target in our general plan?
Yes.
Okay. So to me, we should be setting, the conversation should start by saying, all right, well, the fee ought to be at the level that achieves that. Right? That would be 35, 37.5% below the maximum. Can check my math, but that's about right. So to me, that should be the goal, right? Get it to where the general plan says we want it to be. 37.5% below maximum. I am willing, so that's what I would advocate for. Now, I'm willing to have that phased in over time. I think a couple of my colleagues mentioned, you know, sort of jumping to the 50% below right away and then maybe over a five-year period, jump up 2.5% a year until you get to 37.5% below and fix it there. That would be, I think, a reasonable way to do it and give developers time to get used to the higher fees and get us to where we actually want, you know, what our target is. When we do that though, we got to make sure we're still adjusting for inflation each year, right? So you don't get a 2.5% instead of inflation, it'd be 2.5% in addition to inflation, so to keep pace. So that would be my recommendation there. Grandfathering is fine, especially for already approved projects. I would say the deemed complete by December 31st, 2019, your grandfather did anything that's deemed complete after that, you get the new, the new number. And whatever date you are deemed complete, you get the number as of that date, right? So as we phase in the increase, we go that route. You know, each year, we go up a little bit with the deemed completes for that year. I'm a little disappointed that we didn't, that we don't have a small fee for industrial property types. You know, the commercial office, commercial retail, we're struggling to attract that. I'm fine exempting them. But the industrial, those are uses that, you know, we're less excited about and we're having no problem getting tons of those. So charging a park fee to warehouses and things like that, I am, I think we should seriously consider doing that. Yeah. So I would, I would hope we look at that again. And then to council member Wahab, on your, the transportation sustainability fee, how, or I don't know, is that different from a transportation impact fee that staff was talking about that's going to come back or those?
It's slightly different and that's where we had the conversation. So it's more kind of like, I don't want to say, and there's a lot more detail to it, but kind of in brief, it's basically putting money away for the impacts that we know based on the high density and so forth that are going to cost us far more, millions and millions and millions, up to billions of dollars. And within the first year, you can actually accrue like millions of dollars for the city. So it is a pocket of that. The few cities that do it are the larger cities that really do high density. So I think that that is something that I'd like for all of us to potentially take a look at. And then there's some caveats for each city.
Okay, thank you. So what I would say is that we're already coming back with the transportation impact fee. I'm intrigued by this concept. I don't know enough about it to weigh in on it now, but if that came back as part of the transportation impact fee discussion, that would be helpful. So thank you for that suggestion, council member Wahab. Yeah, I think, I think that's it for me. Really, really good work and thank you to my colleagues for, so far, supporting, moving the fees up to where they need to be. Thank you.
Thank you, staff, for your work. I just wanted to clarify, I know we had a joint work session with Hard. I believe this is the one item we think have a chance to get to. So thank you for re-engaging Hard and we see their input on this item, but that was a very productive meeting, but we all wanted to talk and get to all the action items. So I'm also generally in support of staff's recommendations. I'm hearing a lot of comments tonight from my colleagues because we can't help to talk about housing affordability, barriers to providing more housing. And so I encourage the public to watch our retreat that was televised on October 7th. You can view that online and specifically to the proposed housing projects. And this will be coming back to us and speaking specifically to our vision, strategic planning for this body. So hopefully those items will come back to us in January, but a lot of what's been mentioned by... back to us in January, but a lot of what's been mentioned by my colleagues was discussed at that retreat. So overall, I am in support of staff's recommendations. In terms of the comments made about collecting a nominal fee for industrial use, I think that is something, when I was on CEDC, the Council Economic Development Committee, we talked about that, about having trails and just kind of like those structures that people want to do exercises, but just a way to encourage people to step away from their desks. So definitely would support that. I'm also in agreement with the bedroom count. Initially, I wanted to do the 50% allowable rate, however, being mindful that another part of this discussion is looking at the in-lube housing fees. I know we increased those about two years ago, but I know we're going to be doing this whole analysis in terms of what the city is doing to incentivize production. So I don't want to come out too strong in terms of fees. I want to be a little bit more balanced. So at this point, I could recommend the 35% allowable, but really want to see the inflation CPI built into that. I think that was a missed opportunity. We didn't do that back in 2003. So can staff speak to that?
I just want to clarify. So you said you wanted to start at the 50, but now you're thinking 35%?
Uh, but reducing it down to the 30, no, no, sorry, I'm getting the numbers mixed up. So let me pull the sheet. I want to make sure I'm being clear in my comments. Give me a second. And I don't have the PowerPoint handy, so.
I want to make sure that I just understand that you want to be sensitive and make sure that it's, at least initially, it's a lower fee.
Yes. So I'm, my preference is the 50%, I'm sorry, the 35% reduction. But given that we're going to be looking at other fees, I think we need to be a little bit more disciplined and actually go with the 50%, which is what staff's recommending, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for asking for the clarification. If we weren't looking at considering other fees, then I feel more inclined to 35% reduction, but this is where I'm landing at this point. And then, looking at my notes here, in terms of expanding the range for affordable, the exemptions, I'm also open to that. I echo the comments from my colleagues, meet about this isn't in regard to minimizing open spaces, this is strictly in lieu fees. So I'm also in support of that. Also, want to encourage that we actually have no private parks. I think all parks in Hayward should be made public, so I don't think we should be allowing any developer to have private parks. I think that's it. Is there any other feedback that staff needs? No. Okay, thank you.
Very good report by staff. Thank you very much, and I think it's good. I believe that this will take us to a cleaner city, more open space, or whatever you do, whatever you come back with, make sure that it takes us in that direction. So let's see. Yes, on bedroom, bedroom instead of units. Grandfathering has worked, and we have a normal practice, so of course, yes on it. I think that some of these, the 50% is fine. Some of these fees are good in the sense that they will be, they will make us more, I believe, attractive to businesses. I think that's important. And then also, the affordable units, I think, need to be exempt. And my question to you is, what is affordable? Because affordable is not something that's affordable in the city of Hayward or in the Bay Area. So what is affordability?
We would be talking about deed restricted units, meaning, I think what we're talking about now is a range of up to, up to 120% of AMI, which is affordable to moderate income households. And so that's what we're talking about right now. Our current ordinance only exempts affordable that's up to 60% of AMI, so much, you know, far fewer projects can sort of take advantage of those exemptions under our current ordinance. And so staff would recommend expanding that to allow exemptions to go for developments that are providing up to moderate units. So we would be looking to expand that, but they would need to be deed restricted affordable units.
Right. And I understood the explanations to why affordable units are more expensive. But I think that this will lead to builders coming in with units or projects that are two bedrooms, or even one bedrooms, or one and a half bedrooms, something like that our daughter could afford. At the moment, she can't afford $750,000. That's what she lives with us. So that's something that we need to work on. There are also teachers that are in that same position, and newly graduated folks, newly hired professors at Cal State, they're at Chappell. So we need to work with those. That's why the smaller units are important. Let's see, the exempt, the affordable are fine, they're empty, so okay, smaller units, good. We need to provide that open space, that clean space, so that's very important, too. 50% I liked because of the flexibility of fees. So if the minute you come in with a six-month study and you realize that it's not working, then it can be changed. That's normally our practice, too. Okay? I think that's it. Thanks again. Good job.
Okay, thank you. Well, I think we're in, it sounds like we're in general support, maybe moving toward a little bit stronger, higher fees. I, I mean, I am really okay with the recommendations that were made by staff in general. I think we need to be careful. Our home, our home, when the developers, apparently, one of the comments was, consider median home price. And at first, I didn't exactly understand what they meant by that, but I, you know, I think that, what I understand is that it relates to the home price in Hayward as compared with some of the surrounding communities. I don't want to get into why that is different, but we all know. And so, you know, we do have to consider this. We do want to promote housing. We don't want to price ourselves out of it. Someone suggested 50%, and then maybe, I think it was councilmember Marquez, you know, looking to make that stronger later. But we really want to keep in sight the potential need for other fees. And I know, and this came before economic development, that I was, I hadn't ever really heard before of an infrastructure fee, impact fee, and I thought, that's very interesting. We have lots of infrastructure needs, and, you know, we have never charged anything like that. That is somewhat like the transportation impact fee, but it would be, you know, largely for more than just road projects or transportation. Now, we do this now. We do it by doing a thorough review process and asking for mitigations from developers. So in a sense, we already are doing that in a little bit different way. Rather than some kind of standard fee, we are saying, look, when you, when you build here, you know, it's going to impact traffic on this road, or it's going to impact this intersection, and you need to pay for a traffic light, or you need to pay for something like that. I think we need to keep in mind, I think we do need to do some analysis on those, how many ever many bills it was that have just been signed or not signed, and what they actually say, because my understanding is that one of the bills, Senate Bill 330, may impact our ability to assess, assess these fees. We're going to have to, the fees would be frozen at the time the developer submits the project. Now, we often, that starts our analysis, and that's when we come up with, well, you really ought to contribute this much for a road, and we may have to change that practice, based on this bill in particular, or maybe some others. And so I think, and I'm glad that we are looking at the transportation impact fee. Could even broaden that to infrastructure, but I think we may have to consider that, because we're going to have to have these fees in place at the time that the developer, and so doing that on a case-by-case basis may not work if that's what the legislature actually did. And I could, you know, I think we have a reason to keep commercial retail fee, to not charge them for car impact, particularly because we really do have a hard time attracting as much of that kind of development as we would like. And there are certainly trade-offs when people bring jobs or commercial activity. The idea about more industrial, you know, the outer industrial area, especially since they really are served by some really beautiful shoreline facilities we have out there, and probably should pay for a fair share of, you know, of helping keep them up and making them better. So I think that, in general, covers my comments, and it's good that we're moving forward on this and getting it done as soon as we can, because the state is trying to take away our right to, you know, to impose. So we better get our ducks in order as soon as we can on that. Thank you. And if that's it, we're going to move on to the next agenda item, which, okay, we're through with our work sessions. We're now actually going to do something. We are going to consider introduction of an ordinance adding Article 29 to Chapter 10 of the Hayward Municipal Code related to vacant properties, and adoption of a resolution amending the master fee schedule to include fees related to vacant property ordinance. And on this, we're going to hear, are we going to hear from Ms. Simpson, or, and I think also Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Okay.
The presentation we made by our code enforcement manager, Philip Nichols.
Good afternoon, or good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council, and members of the public. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Philip Nichols, Code Enforcement Manager of City Hayward. And I'm here to introduce the introduction of the vacant property I'll just start off just by providing you a little bit about code enforcement, information about code enforcement. Our mission is to ensure safe, healthy, and sustainable neighborhoods for our residents. And we actually do this through enforcement of a variety of adopted and mandated codes, which include something like Building and Safety Code, also the Health and Safety Code, as well as our zoning regulations. We do this through a variety of programs, which include the Residential Rental Inspection Program, Community Preservation Program, Tobacco and Cannabis Inspection Program, just to name just a few. And so I'm just going to get to the heart of the issue here. This mic is small. One of the big issues that came to fruition when I first started here was the problem that we're having with vacant buildings. In the past, and presently as well, back in 2000 and today, been a priority of council, as well of, as well as our departments, to resolve some of the issues that we're facing in an ongoing manner throughout the city with our vacant properties. As you can see here, these are a lot of the conditions that we're finding out there throughout the city. They affect our businesses, commercial centers, as well as our residential neighborhoods. And unfortunately, they provide, in some cases, substandard conditions for some of our most vulnerable properties. And these are, a lot of these are recent images, and you'll kind of probably recognize some of these projects, which have kind of turned around over the years. But our goal is to have a code which allows us to turn these properties around better, faster, and provide general standards for across the board. So when we look at this problem, there are three key elements to, that are affecting staff's ability to effectively conduct enforcement on neglected, abandoned, and vacant properties. The first is knowing when a property has been vacated. Second is knowing who the current owner or authorized agent may be, and how to communicate whether the timing mattered. And the third, which is what I think is the most important, determining the minimum standards to resolve concerns often identified with vacant properties. And when I say properties, I'm also meaning buildings or structures there on these properties. Yeah, which includes vacant lots. And so to approach the solution to this issue, we worked with our fire department, our police department, as well as other departments throughout the city, and gained some public input on crafting an ordinance that had parts that were specific to what we need to address our unique problems in Hayward. And this ordinance is broken down into four separate parts. Our general provisions, which provide some of the general things like purpose, definitions, applications, and exemptions to the code. Our maintenance and security standards, and this is probably the core part of the ordinance, and I'll go into this a little bit more later. Three is our monitoring and registration part, and then four, the administrative section. And as I dive deeper into the standards, the establishment of the standards for this, we can see that one of the past problems that we've had in the, in the past, in addressing these issues, is that we've had no clear standards of enforcement for these properties. A lot of these standards are found in the Health and Safety Code, which is a California state regulation, our building code, as well as our zoning code and our municipal code. So a lot of it is spread all over the place, and we're trying to pull these things in together in a more streamlined fashion to have a process and codes that work with our city a lot faster and a lot better. So here, we've established site maintenance standards, which include landscaping, parking lots, accessory structures, things like that. Building maintenance, which addresses windows and doors, and your egress points, your paint and exterior siding, utility systems, and general maintenance. Fire safety, fire safety in live components, operational fire protection, free of fire hazards, and some of these things are preventative measures that keep our firefighters safe when they enter these places. And then we have our security section, which goes into standards for security on vacant properties, which may include restrictions of boarding material, and the use of alternate polycarbonate material, which I'll go into later as well, which provide for more robust security, but yet better aesthetics in the neighborhood. And then also, in this security component, we're having requirements for trespassing and prevention to work with the police department. And then, of course, we have to have a component for our emergency boarding standards for properties which face fires, earthquakes, and things like that. So the end result is what we're looking for. You can see the top current picture, what we don't want, which is what we currently have. We want to get away from that, and this code will allow us to bring our properties into conditions which would be shown at the bottom here, which is where we feel this would be a yes for council. With the polycarbonate requirements, properties that face significant break-ins and ongoing crime, especially through the boards and things like that, we're trying to move away from that material and go to the polycarbonate material, which you can see at the bottom, bottom left. This is a break-resistant polycarbonate material that we would use in place of boards that will provide for better aesthetics, but also better security throughout the city. So also the end results, we're going to be doing some data tracking in regards to a lot of this stuff. And then here, I'll go into the fees. Just keep in mind that this, this program is a little bit different than the approach that most cities take. While our fees are high, you know, I would consider this is full cost recovery for the city, and code enforcement typically tries to operate in a zero cost to the city manner. These are all annual fees throughout the area, and code enforcement kind of sits right under San Jose, a little bit over Alameda, as we propose fees right there. Our fees for noncompliance are kind of consistent with our current egregious schedule, and also with surrounding jurisdictions, sticking out the 15, 3, and $5,000 monthly amounts for compliance, for noncompliance. And just a quick note, when I say noncompliance and program monitoring, these are specifically for properties that are not in compliance with the ordinance. for properties that are not in compliance with the ordinance, but not for our good stewards of property. So our timeline for this, should council be interested in kind of moving this forward, would be over the next few months, prepare the program for launch, possibly in January, by getting out educational materials and doing a field survey of vacant properties, as well as looking at foreclosure listings. The staff recommends that council introduces the vacant property ordinance as seen as attachment two, adding Article 29 to Chapter 10 of the Hayward Municipal Code and adopts the resolution for amending the master fee schedule, which is found in the chapter for actually attachment three, and includes fees related to the vacant property ordinance. And that will be the end of that presentation, where any questions, council may have.
All right. Are there any questions down here at this end? Councilmember Mendel?
Thank you. Thank you for the work on this. And just one question, so if a property is vacant but not a nuisance, they're maintaining it to the standards that are outlined, do they still need to pay the annual fee?
No, they would not be included in the monitoring program.
Okay. But I wanted to be clear. Thank you.
Yeah, we got, we heard the direction from council on that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rahal?
To determine whether or not a property is vacant, how long, how do you, how long do you see it as a vacancy before you consider it a vacant building, if you will?
We typically have a 10-day turnaround for it, but the vacancy depends on the conditions of it. You know, it can be vacant, but if it's vacant and maintained, consistent with the ordinance, it's not an issue. But if it's vacant and not maintained and very neglected, violating the standards set forth in the ordinance, it'll be 10 days when they get that notice before they have to register.
Okay. And I wanted to ask, I see your fees, and I wanted to ask if, this is both for residential and commercial?
Yes.
And are we able to make a tiered system for residential vacancies versus commercial?
We can look at that option if council would like to.
And the only reason why I say is, is because the range of $1,500 to $5,000 on a daily, weekly, or monthly basis is for residential, like let's say if it was just, you know, a lapse or, you know, a death in the family or something like that, that, you know, there's a timeframe. I think that that poses a significant hindrance on that particular family or, you know, whoever is going to eventually maintain it. So I would like to take a look at that. And then are we able to, the inspections, our inspection team, how many folks are inspecting and overall, what's the capacity for inspection team? I understand that we're potentially taking a look at that as well down the line.
Yeah, currently, we're looking at possibly adding one additional limited-term person, if possible. You know, staff is kind of maxed out at the moment, but we do have bandwidth through the recreation of current process that we're currently going through right now.
And what does the team look like and how frequently? For example, I know that for residential rent inspections, right, it's about two people for the entire city. So what are we looking at for?
So just to clarify that, rental inspections include the entire team. We escalate the number of team members based on the number of units in the complex. Our previous work model in the past was one inspector per zone, per the complex, and so you would have one inspector on an 80-unit complex where we can inspect it, versus our current model that we just implemented is reducing that time to roughly three to four hours for a team inspection, pulling all inspectors in at the time of inspection. The vacant buildings are a little bit different. They're predominantly exterior inspections. I think it's anticipated that we probably would use the one person. It wouldn't take a team of inspectors to do a vacant building inspection, because remember where we're looking for visual violations typically unless we're getting into an inspection warrant to go into the property itself.
All right, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any questions down at this, Councilmember Mendel?
Sharon, sorry. I wanted to follow up on the questions from Councilmember Rahal about the cost, just so I'm clear. So that $2,500 one-time registration fee, that's for all property types, regardless of if it's a single-family home, a multifamily property, or a commercial or industrial property?
Yes, that's correct. That's the annual registration monitoring fee. And that's based on our average timeline or average time allowance for vacant property cases as of current.
Okay. And then the fines are the same, they apply to all of those different, the same fine structure applies to all of those different?
Yes.
Building types? How does that, do we have other examples of fine structures, for example, for these building types? Is that typical, that it's the same fine for a dilapidated single-family home as it is for a dilapidated, you know, 250,000 square foot warehouse?
Yes, for egregious fines, it can be, but we do have flexibility in terms of allowing a longer period. So for residential properties now, we do allow a longer term for compliance. So there's flexibility in how the director or the manager implements the fines as well.
Flexibility on the amount, or just the timing, or both?
Timing. It could be both.
Okay, so we wouldn't need to necessarily change the ordinance as opposed tonight to for staff to have the ability to apply some common sense here, right? See, that's what I'm sort of getting at.
And we could also, because we come back every year and update the master fee schedule, if we have some experience with this over the next few months, we could also update or change the fees this spring with the master fee schedule.
Okay.
So that would allow the council to adopt the ordinance tonight and then we could come back.
With a look back for the spring. Okay, all right. Thank you. Appreciate that.
All right. Councilmember Marques?
Thank you, Mayor. A lot of my questions were already answered by my colleagues, but I just wanted to let the public know that I can't see that far. So I have to look at the PowerPoint on my phone and toggle between my phone and my laptop. So the main question that I wanted to make sure got answered is that we're establishing these standards. So once this ordinance is adopted, basically every building, commercial, residential, or unimproved land, and us as property owners, city of Hayward, we would also be subject to this ordinance, right? We're not exempting ourselves from this?
Yes, this is, yeah, specifically to vacant properties and vacant buildings.
Okay, so we would have to adhere to the same standards?
Yes.
And this, we would still have to comply with the mesh screening that we're requiring on metal fences and all of that, that would still stay intact, correct? This wouldn't?
Yes, this is not circumvented in any other ordinance.
Okay. So I'm generally in support of it. It's, yes, sorry, no questions. Okay, so specific question, sorry, we're doing a work session marathon here. Specific question is, I think this was already asked, but it wasn't clear to me in the response. Once a building becomes vacant, anyone can notice the city that it's vacant and it's not adhering to these standards? And then did you say the city would then send a 10-day notice for them to comply with adhering to the standards, or automatically enroll? That's what I'm unclear about.
Yes, at that point, there will be an inspector, do a site inspection to confirm the conditions associated with the report, and then they'll be enrolled at that point if those violations are confirmed.
Okay. And then I heard staff having some autonomy with discretion specific to single-family homes and not complying with the standards. Is there any language that can be added, like in unique circumstances, contact of directors? Is there any flexibility in including some type of disclaimer to that effect? Or do we currently do that with any type of fines?
Yeah, I think we already have that in our exemption section of the discretion.
And that would be the written notice that any owner receives?
No, that would be in the ordinance itself.
Okay, but is that a practice we currently do, having it in writing?
No.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Remania, do you have a question?
Yes, I have three. Thank you for the report. I think it's finally good that we're doing this. So my one question is, when can we get rid, or when will we get rid of that eyesore relating to Tennyson? Because this is something that's very, very important to me. This is our, this is my baby road. I want that ugly eyesore out of there. So when can you do this?
I want it out. We'll be doing an assessment as soon as the ordinance goes through, between now and January, or hopes of starting it up in January, as soon as staff gets back in.
Even when it was operating, it was in pretty bad shape. And those are vacuum, please. I have, on page three of six, there's a statement there that says vacant properties that have entered into a development-related agreement with the city are extended. And I don't know what have entered into development-related agreement with the city. Does that mean that a vacant property is, has been empty for 50 years, but they have an agreement with the city that they're looking for someone, that they're okay with their extent from this particular fine?
That would be more actually along the lines of, for example, the Caltrans, the 238 properties. If we have a disposition and development agreement, that that could be, the terms of that agreement can be separate and could be different from the requirements of the ordinance.
So does this mean that we would allow BART to keep that up-looking chain link fence on Grand and A, or what does this mean? I don't like that particular area.
No, I mean, that would still fall within the ordinance. I'm not aware of a separate DVA for that particular site.
So we're not thinking of extending BART?
No.
Nor are we thinking of extending Caltrans on Santa Clara and Jackson? Or not? Thank you for that. All right. So when can we start discussing finding properties that are well-kept but have been vacant for 10, 20, 30, 40, 50 years? When can we start that work? Next to the Bank of America, this is a very nice-looking building that's been empty since when my colleague Elisa was before him born. And that's more than 40, 40 years, right?
Yeah. That becomes difficult because that gets into the property's owner to do what they will with their property. This ordinance is more or less drafted to, for standards and health and safety issues to make sure that these properties are maintained in a manner that's safe for the public, but also not a nuisance for surrounding businesses and residents.
So the city manager, do you think you need a referral from me to go after these folks?
I know, microphone is not standing up. There has been conversation about kind of the, sort of a fee for the vacant buildings just to incentivize property owners to do, to look at, or to fill their buildings. You know, that's something that we could look at, I think. The challenge is, is the biggest, the bigger issue for us right now is getting the properties at least maintained in some level of, you know, good condition. You know, again, setting up that fee for a vacant property also requires monitoring and staff time. And so I think at this point, the bigger issue and the concern for us is making sure that we've got the properties, we have staff to go inspect. So it's a prioritization exercise. And so I think it's better to get this ordinance uprunning. Let's try and get, you know, maybe by enforcing this ordinance, property owners may choose to say, oh, it's better to go ahead and try and do something with my property.
But it's good because it does go with our motto of cleaner and cleaner. So thank you very much.
Okay. I know we had a question from the chamber about, or a suggestion that it extend to vacant lots. Right now, this doesn't really speak to vacant lots, does it? And we already, we have put into place rules about fences and, you know, that, maybe Councilmembers Remania for that, but, you know, but this one isn't vacant.
Actually, it is. We've actually taken into consideration government relations committee concerns regarding lots, as well as Chamber of Commerce members, and we've addressed that in the ordinance itself as well.
Okay, so there are now standards for vacant lots too. Yeah, I did, I did look for it, really. And then, and then just once more, how a building gets registered? Every vacant building does not necessarily have to be registered, does it, if it is maintained in a way that is consistent with our rules, right?
Yes, that's correct.
And then, okay, so that, but, and we're looking for those eyesores that we know, and people will start complaining. So a complaint comes in, we go look at it, say, yep, that is. We send a notice to the property owner, and they have 10 days to register the building, not to, not to do the, whatever they need to do, right?
Yes.
Okay. I just, yeah, there were some questions that I, I'm not sure we were clear on that. Okay, thank you. Then I'm going to go ahead and open up a public comment on this item. We don't have any requests to speak. Is there anyone who would like to? Please, go ahead. Just say your name again.
I'm sorry, do I need to fill out another card?
No.
Maybe later. The city clerk says no, so.
Okay. My name again is Catherine Ruby, and I just had two questions in regards to this. I was wondering about vacant, abandoned buildings versus homes or businesses that have succumbed to a disaster, like a fire, for example. You said that there was an exception for those kinds of cases?
Yes, we have, in the standards, we have emergency standards for properties that face significant turmoil due to some type of disaster like fire emergencies, or earthquakes, or things like that.
Okay. The second question I had is, does it include properties that are for sale versus not for sale, including places that have been for sale for many years?
This ordinance is specific to all properties. It doesn't distinguish between for sale or not for sale. It's strictly in regards to the standards. So it can be for sale or not for sale. The standards just have to be kept.
Okay. The building I had in mind specifically was Holliday Hole, which is, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And eyesore for many years. So I know it's for sale or has been for many years, so I just kind of wondered, you know, how that falls into that.
Lauren might have some.
Just separately, that is a project that has been under environmental clearance, and they've recently received environmental clearance. So that property is, based on our discussions with the developer, they're planning to move ahead with demolishing existing buildings.
Okay, thank you.
That's even better than having it come under the ordinance, I think. I think it would come under the ordinance, though.
Yes.
But we're actually going to get a whole new development there, so. And is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, we will.
Salute.
Do you really want to speak on this item, Mr. Peters? All right, I'm forwarding.
I, interesting conversation, but I wonder if it shouldn't be some consideration to the possibility of notifying people subject to these processes, getting some sort of a notice upfront to make some changes, to correct the problem, rather than using the punishment agenda to change behavior, using a respectful, what would you like to do? Because it appears as if you may be out of compliance here. Do you have a plan? Would you like to assist us? Rather than starting with, gotcha, to create the outcome and make great change. And I suspicion that, based upon my own personal experience, that that may be significantly more effective in producing what you would like to see than the punishment methodology that I thought I heard. So... So, and that's something that could be done in a pilot demonstration to find out what would work best, that would do the best thing for the city, provide the outcomes that you'd like to see, in the shortest timeframe, to the least cost to the city, to get the kinds of things that you'd like to see. So what I'm saying to you is that, an opportunity to make corrections, and allowing that the property owner to participate and make, set the standard, what they intend to do is fix the problem, and then following up and making sure that takes place, could be very effective, giving you the outcome that you'd like to see. And that can be done over a little pilot demonstration to show what systems are appropriate with the city.
All right, thank you. And actually, it is built in. It's an escalation, and I think there is an initial requirement to register, but that's only if they've already been out of compliance, right?
Yes.
Okay. But thank you for the comments. And with that, I think I did hear someone, Councilmember Salinas.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to what Mr. Peters said. You know, I think the way it works now with any kind of inspection, if it's like, you know, someone goes and inspects it, whether it's residential or commercial, I personally have seen cases, and both homeowners and empty building owners have come to me, and some, not all, not all cases, but some have been given time to correct. Staff has been flexible, the city has been flexible. So things that you are addressing, I think staff has done, has done that. What this ordinance specifically is going after is the buildings like you just mentioned. They're going after buildings that have been chronically empty and chronically dilapidated with little in any regard to fix them, or even to maintain them, much less to put up a piece of plywood and so forth. So anyways, my point is, is that this ordinance is specifically going after that. We're not losing the flexibility of our inspectors, and you know, we're still, you know, I, and so I, you know, I get your comments. So that's why I moved this. This is something that I know this council has been talking about for a very, very, very long time. And we have buildings not only on downtown, but we've had buildings on Mission Boulevard. There's been residential homes. You go into any neighborhood, and a neighbor will say, what about the house up the street? You know, and so that's what this ordinance specifically goes after, and without losing the flexibility to make onsite judgments and decisions. So I so moved.
The staff recommendations. Is there a second?
The gentleman mentioned my name, so I'd like to respond if I could.
No, I'm sorry. Mr. Peters, really, we are having our council discussion now. You can talk to him.
I'm sorry, do you respond to my comments? I think it's appropriate to be on the record that I would like a short response.
Mr. Peters, that is not, that is not the way we operate, though. Those are not the rules. So please, no. Now, was that a second, Councilmembers Armanio? Okay. So, okay, so would you like to, Councilmember Mendel?
I hope you don't mind me speaking before you, Councilmember Armanio, because I want to compliment you, actually. You deserve a lot of credit for pushing this for many years. I know for as long as I've been on council, you've been trying to get us to do something like this, and have continued to push and advocate for it. And I just want to thank you for that, because that leadership is a big part of why we are here today doing this. And, you know, good work by staff. It's a good, it's a good ordinance, I think it's balanced. I do hope that you'll, you know, you'll be exercising common sense when applying the fine structure to residential buildings, and we can revise that in the, you know, in the master fee schedule in eight, nine months to sort of codify that. But in the meantime, just use some common sense. But thank you, Councilmember Armanio, for reading on this issue.
Thank you. So I agree with the appreciation, and also wanted to offer a small correction to the text, which I'll do in a minute, but also to encourage, I don't think this needs a change, but just an encouragement for city staff to, for this new staff member to work with the residences that are targeted, to look at positive temporary uses. You know, we talked about art in the vacant building, or short-term lease to a nonprofit or an arts gallery. And I think the opportunity to curate a list of like the Downtown Business Association that has some structure to do that kind of work. The arts organizations have done that in the past. Home Match is actually, Covia is looking, is an organization that does home matching for people that need an affordable place to stay, and somebody who may have property that they can't manage at this point. So I think there's some interesting opportunities there to create the ability for those who may not be able to manage it on their own, to have that help, and to have it be positive. Also, as those properties get identified, becomes an opportunity for economic development to say, hey, I know a great place for your thing, which may get to Councilmember Armanio's point of the properties that aren't a problem but have been not underutilized for a long time. And then lastly, on the ordinance itself, on the first paragraph, item A, I'd like to suggest, and I don't think these are contextual changes, they're just minor text changes, but I think they shift the focus to the issue rather than a group of people. So if I may, really quickly, I'll read my suggestion. Right now, it says in the second sentence, they attract children, vagrants, gang members, and criminal activities. And I'd suggest that that say, they attract criminal and unsafe activities. And then the second line reads, or the line after that reads, they are also vulnerable to fire set by transients or others using the property illegally. I would suggest, as such, they are vulnerable to fire, theft, and other illegal activities. I think that focuses on what we're worried about and not calling out kids or something like that. So if the maker and the second are meanable to that text change?
See.
Okay, thank you. And then there's a, okay, staff get that? And I gave a written copy to the city. Great. And then there's a tiny typo on page four of 15, there's an extra R, just F more out. I gave you a copy of that, too. Yeah, item part two, first paragraph. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you for that. Thank you for the job of proofreading. And I think Councilmember Wahab, sorry.
Yeah. No, I appreciate it. I just want staff to clarify for me, prior to a vote, one, let's say that there is a home that we see that, you know, we want to report in, and an average resident walks down the street and says, okay, this home needs a little bit of help, and they report it into the city. Can you walk me through the path and the timeline? And I want to address Mr. Peters's concern, too. If we do submit a letter in the mail to this person to please, you know, correct this or correct that, what is the timeframe? And the reason why I'm concerned is two weeks. I know it's like sometimes kind of the average of what we tend to do. Two weeks, there are days lost when that gets mailed out, if it gets mailed out later or shipped out, you know, whatever. So I just want to see what the timeline is, and to address Mr. Peters in a sense of just the respectful communication prior to any egregious violation of enforcement type of methodology.
Okay, so there's two parts to this. There is the monitoring program, and then there is also penalty fees, right? The penalty fees are for continued noncompliance with the order. The monitoring fees are the initial assessment and determination that this building is in violation of the ordinance, and subsequently placed into the monitoring program for that year. Yeah, yeah. So to Laura's point, they'll have months in that year to comply, right? So when we get a report, we go out and assess the property. If that building is found to be in violation of that ordinance, they'll be issued, or one, they'll be enrolled into the program. They'll be issued a notice for compliance as well. Typically, that notice is about 30 days. So after that time period, if they had not made corrections, we continue along those compliance measures with those penalties.
Okay. No, I appreciate that. And then I just want to confirm, was council in agreement in the sense of that we would have a tiered model for residential versus commercial and that? I'm not sure if we, I think we brought it up, but.
Didn't hear anybody in action on it. We have not.
Okay, so staff would understand that there's a flexibility request that for single-family homeowners versus commercial property owners?
Yes.
Correct, okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, I do think that it's been our general practice as a city, coming from this council and with the way the staff works, that we do try to work with property owners whenever we are trying to, you know, correct something. And staff will look at, you know, specific problems that the owner may have, and try to work with that. I know that that has happened in the past. In fact, we've gotten, we've gotten thank yous from people for doing that, I think. So I hope that, I think, I think what we're saying is we would like that to continue.
Yeah, and it does. You know, just to be clear on this subject, staff is routinely engaged in notifying properties that have issues like this. The reality of the matter was, we never had standards to adequately deal with these properties. But a lot of these properties are currently on notice and have been on notice for quite some time. The difference is now that we have standards. But typically, we typically start off with a courtesy notice in most cases, when we're dealing with almost every type of code enforcement case.
Okay, thank you. Everybody, Councilmember Armanio?
Just to, I'll just do a small favor, then we give Mr. Peters one minute to state his point.
All right, Mr. Peters, what is it you would like to say?
Wow, I do. That's very nice. I think your point that you have a lot of stuff out of compliance that you'd like to see in compliance is absolutely valid. And what I'm saying is that I think that if you allow the property owner to contribute themselves and to present to the city what they might do to come into compliance, they might get that done immensely faster, meet your goals better than otherwise.
Thank you.
So I absolutely, I'm not disagreeing with your position that you want these bad acres taken care of. Yes, I absolutely agree.
Thank you, I think we got your point. Okay, so with that, and listening to the comments, we're going to vote on this motion that was made by Councilmember Salinas and seconded by Councilmember. I'm sorry, what? Yes, sorry, Adam, City Clerk.
Councilmember Armanio.
See.
Councilmember Markets.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel.
Yes.
Councilmember Lammon.
Aye.
Councilmember Wahab.
Yes, sorry.
Councilmember Salinas.
Yes.
Mayor Halliday.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, great. Now, we are moving on to city manager, comments from our city manager.
I have no comments this evening, thank you.
All right. Council reports and announcements.
Yes.
Councilmember Salinas.
Just wanted to make a brief announcement on behalf of the Hayward Promise Neighborhood. Starting October 23rd, I believe that's a Wednesday, October 23rd, there will be a new Fresh Food for Families site at Glassbrook Elementary School, 975 Schaefer Road, here in Hayward, right on the corner of Schaefer and Gaddy. Starting on October 20, Wednesday, October 23rd, there will be a free fruit and vegetable distributions, distribution co-sponsored by the Alameda County Community Food Bank, and by the Hayward Promise Neighborhood, and the school district, and, what's it called? School District, Alameda County Community Food Bank, and the Hayward Promise Neighborhood. It starts at 1:00 PM to 2:00 PM, and like I said, it'll be a produce-only distribution. This is a new site. We are transitioning from the hub to Glassbrook. This new site is squarely in the footprint of the new Hayward Promise Neighborhood. So I wanted to invite everybody to join us on the first distribution, which will be October 23rd, Wednesday, October 23rd. Thank you.
Councilmember Lammon.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick announcements from other meetings. So the Hayward Local Agencies Committee, which is a joint committee of the city, the school district, and the recreation district, met last week. Three of us are on that committee. And one of the items was about housing for unaccompanied minors. And so just wanted to let the public know that there is a working group looking at how to provide shelter for unaccompanied minors in our community. And La Familia, and Eden United Church of Christ are taking the lead on that. So if you would like to get involved, please do. They're looking for a site. There is some county funding available to help with that. Also, AC Transit, from our AC Transit Joint Committee that Councilmembers Armanio and I are on, the Line 60 is expanding its service around the city and to Chabot College, but we're still trying to figure out how to restore service to South Hayward. The industrial area got approved, but the, this side of town to Chabot, we realize that link is still missing, as well as some late shift work in the industrial area. It's a money issue, but we're working to figure out what can be done. So just wanted to let people know that was still in the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody up here? Councilmember Markets?
Thank you, Councilmember Lammon. To follow up on your information with regard to services for housing unaccompanied minors, Eden Church is hosting a training on November 10th, it's a Sunday, from 2:00 to 5:30. You can probably find this information online, or send me an email, and I'd be happy to share it. You can also contact Pastor Arlene Narig with that information. Also wanted to share with the public that on October 26th, it's National Day of Service, so please join our key Hayward Clean and Green Task Force, sees you East Bay students, Chabot students, and beautifying our neighborhood. We're going to meet at Annabella's Candy Factory at 27211 Industrial Boulevard. This is again Saturday, October 26th, from 8:00 to 11:30. And I had one more announcement, but maybe someone else will recall what else is coming up in the next week or two. I think that's it, maybe that's it. Thank you. Oh, no, I do have one more thing. I wanted to thank my colleague, Councilmember Sarah Lammon, the mayor, Councilmember Marksman's wife, Letty Salinas, for those of you that attended the Hearts of Hayward Award Ceremony last Tuesday. It was an amazing event. We acknowledged hundreds of volunteers. Thank you all for serving on that committee. It was a fabulous, fabulous evening, and thank you for honoring all our amazing volunteers.
Thank you for that, yes, I think that that was, it's one of the most heartwarming evenings of the year in Hayward, to get a room full of people who basically work in groups to help people in need in this community, and, you know, allowing each of those groups to recognize a volunteer and to share, network. You know, you just could feel that spirit in the room, and I think it's because of the kind of people who come to that dinner, people who already are involved in helping others in our community. So it's a great, great event, and we really appreciate the cooperation with, the arrangement with St. Rose Hospital's Foundation to, you know, use that tent that's up for a week every year. With that, unless anybody else has anything? We're going to move on to our referral items, and we have one this evening, item number seven. It, well, it concerns education as a city priority, and, okay, consider an item for discussion on a future city council agenda regarding a joint full board meeting between Hayward School Board and the city council on a regular basis. So, anyone want to comment on that? It was introduced by Councilmembers Wahab and Salinas.
So, yeah, I just wanted to, I mean, I think the referral sort of speaks for itself. It's just a, an ask of the council to support the city manager reaching out to the school district to organize a joint school board meeting between the city council and the Hayward Unified School District, just like what we've done in the past with the hard board on, you know, several other topics that we've had over the years. But it's But it's, you know, an agenda would be defined in cooperation between the two agencies, and it would be an opportunity that both agencies can have a discussion about some of the, you know, relevant issues in the city regarding education today.
All right. And, you know, I just want to say that I think some of you guys are familiar with... Well, I'm going to say that education is one of the equalizers that we see in today's society. We cannot talk about housing and good-paying jobs and so forth without education at the core of every single thing that we talk about in this city. I'm very, very happy that Councilmember Salinas, as an educator in this city and as a person who has worked with children for years, has agreed to do this. Now, I will tell you all that, you know, I grew up in Fremont. I went to Fremont schools. Fremont, for the most part, meets quarterly, full city council, full school board. And we do have something called H-LAC, which, you know, in one of the announcements, the first announcement I've heard about H-LAC at the city council meeting, has two school board members, two city council members, and two parks boards. Three? Three, sorry, thank you. And, you know, historically, we've had also a full-body city council meeting with a parks board. And we talk about different items that affect, you know, the parks and the city and how we can collaborate. This referral was pretty much to understand how the city can support our school district. And it's very, very important because of the fact that we, as a city, can actually, let's say, support the school in areas of, you know, safety and transportation, housing and youth programs, after-school programs, joint youth facility agreements, financial assistance, and the fact that the city of Hayward definitely needs to adopt and move forward in a path where we become an education city. We have three colleges in this city, and we definitely need to be able to just unite everybody. Now, historically, we know that there has been some baggage between the different bodies, and I think we're at a crossroads, in my personal opinion. I think that we know that we need to move forward and take that step in leadership to definitely just have that discussion very openly and honestly. And I know that I've been talking about it for several months with some staff members and so forth, and I know that there's a little bit of some concerns around this open discussion. The reason why I still support it is I had a conversation with former California Superintendent Delane Easton. Now, Delane was... is not only a professor, but she became, obviously, California Superintendent, and she's from Union City and her family lived in Hayward. And she said even 40 years ago, the problems with crime, low scores, transportation, families working, multilingual families, you know, it's a struggle. And I think that the city can actually offer a lot more support than we have historically. And I just think that having the discussion and open dialogue and an open forum would benefit the city as a whole in regards to many, many different areas, and then also provide students a bigger opportunity. And the reason why I'm such an advocate of this education city model and the... And granted, this is not our realm. The school board is really at the hand here. It's because I do believe that education is that one equalizer, and I know I benefited greatly from education being the one stability in my life, and I hope that we can do the same for the students of Hayward.
Okay, thank you. I think before we hear from other council members, let's hear public comment. I have several cards. And just to remind everybody, on these referral items, we are limiting public comment to one minute. We aren't doing anything, and we aren't acting on this business merely to have the city staff or something like that. So that is our protocol under referral process. And so, the first card is from Daisy Maxson.
Hello. I'll try to stop really fast. So I just want to say thank you again for allowing me to speak and address the need for education as a city priority. My name is Daisy Maxson, and I currently serve as the student body president for California State University East Bay. And on behalf of the 15,000 students of CSUBB, I would highly like to urge for the city to do more for our education system. I urge the city to support the school board and the efforts to ease pathways for student success. This is a great opportunity to move forward and show your support for our families, our schools, and students like myself. So I just want to say thank you again and to really consider this.
Thank you.
I have a question for you.
Oh, Ms. Maxson? Councilmember Sermanio has a question for you.
Thank you for supporting the fraternity that's going to work with me to clean San Lorenzo.
Oh, yeah, yeah. East Bay is awesome for that.
I like it. I don't even know you, but I like it.
Thank you. I like you too.
Well, that was okay, but it wasn't a question.
Oh, let's see. So when did you support the fraternity?
Councilmembers, that's okay. Okay, the next speaker is Tammy Russell. And after her, Alicia Crinder.
Good evening. I wasn't ready for the one-minute question. I believe that the Hayward Unified School District should pub pap public meetings with the city. HUSD has a bad habit of making decisions where children have to look like behind doors to close doors that seal and solidify their detriment. HUSD should give reports to the city and to the public. Because while the city slogan says there's no room for racism, HUSD paves the way for racism, builds a shrine to it, and rewards schools that uphold and perpetuate racism. How can the city slogan and the school district views be so different? The school district needs to be publicly held accountable for their actions. Right now, the school district goes around with big words like "equity and culturally responsive teaching." Typically, schools throw those words around when they plan on doing nothing but sitting on their hands. Meanwhile, there is no change to the horrendous environment that is the school site. Right now, HUSD is not even capable of keeping the grass green on a lot of campuses. If that's what's happening to the grass, what's happening to our children's minds and their future? I believe that there should be regular meetings with the city because there's a horrible disconnect. We need to talk more about what's going to happen with the unaccompanied minors and the homeless children, because the school gets a grant for them. There needs to be a coming together in order to ensure a bright future for our children. I was taught that children are the message that we send into the future when we can't do them. What message are we sending? That we didn't care enough to invest in their future? Let's collaborate and send a good message. Thank you.
Alicia Crinder, followed by Brooks Moyer.
I'm here to speak in support of the referral as well. As a product of the Hayward Public School System, I can speak to the fact that there is a lot of room for improvement. And Almendel, I know that you work and live in Hayward, and I believe you have great school age children who you do not send to Hayward Public Schools. So I take it that you also understand that there is a lot of need for support in this area. I expect not only you, but everyone on the council to be in support of the referral. Because our education system not only creates the foundation for our city's future and our leaders, but it affects city development, housing, and the community as a whole. These education issues are city issues, and the current H-LAC meetings are not sufficient. So I hope that you all follow the example of our neighboring cities whose councils and schools are actually able to work together and put their students and families first. Thank you.
Followed by Eric Salier.
All right, I'll go fast, too. Hello, thank you so much. A couple of quick things. First, I do think if education is a city priority, it should not be the last thing on the agenda when everybody's gone home. Two, I'm a grad student at Cal State East Bay where I study education history and policy. I'm a graduate teaching assistant researcher there, and right now I'm researching Berkeley's school desegregation in the '60s. That is important in a second. As you guys have said, education uplifts and equalizes people, but I think it's important to realize, just as councilmember Wahab said, education cannot uplift without a city that is intent on removing the barriers that affect the education: transportation, housing, economic opportunity like the minimum wage increase. So I just wanted to put my support for these joint meetings, but also strongly advise that there's a creation of a joint committees with the council and the board and the community stakeholders: teacher unions, parents, students. This is what helped Berkeley desegregate their schools so successfully, the whole community coming together and building a diverse coalition that was a representative of the community stakeholders.
Thank you.
If you are serious about removing these barriers, like addressing the need for a minimum wage increase, I don't know how you can be really serious about education in Hayward.
Thank you. Followed by Sarah Prada, followed by Daisy Bates, and then...
Good evening. Oh, my gosh, listen to... Listen a minute. I just wanted to also address the importance of working together. So I definitely support the referral, and thank you, Councilmember Salinas and Councilmember Wahab for bringing this forward. We could... If we could all, like, work together, we could definitely make sure that our kids will have a better future. I don't know if any of you have looked at the test scores last day just came out, and they're not really good. But I'm pretty sure if we go forward with this, you know, by working together, having the city and the school board and parents and community all working together, we could really make a difference. Also, you know, all those issues that are in the schools, we need better after-school programs, and that's something that I'm pretty sure that the city of Hayward could definitely support for our children.
Sarah Prada. Followed by Daisy Bates. Very late. Education, the last spot, huh? All right, here we go.
City council and the Hayward School Board should be working together for the success of Hayward's residents. Hayward schools are failing to support their students. They are failing to give them the education that they deserve. Therefore, our students aren't ready for college and aren't prepared enough to compete for tech jobs or any job that will help them live a comfortable life. This then becomes a city problem. The city of Hayward is under rapid development, but it doesn't have its current residents in mind. By working together to provide a strong education for Hayward's children, then our city will grow stronger and become competitive. We will be giving our future a chance. I heard so much sympathy for local businesses with many requests to have further research to how... Further research to how they will be impacted by the increase of minimum wage. In fact, you've asked us to rally behind local businesses like Buthwell Bills. Unfortunately, I did not hear most of you have this much passion towards the families and students who are suffering today. They don't have the luxury of waiting every six months for a small increase. I would challenge you to live on an $11 per hour paycheck while paying rent in the city while supporting families.
Thank you.
Daisy Bates, resident of Hayward for 35 years, three children that went through Hayward Unified School Districts, all three college graduates from excellent universities, and all of them educated in Hayward. So I'm very proud of the place where my children were born, the place where my children studied. But what I am not so pleased is the appalling difficulties and differences that the school board and the city of Hayward has had for many years. I do not appreciate having a council member in the past, not too long ago, recommending a charter school to come to Hayward, a charter school that did not have credential teachers, a charter school that did not have any ideas of programs for our ELL students, for our special ed students. So we need to start there. We need to start looking at the opportunities that you make available during election times to bring friends to apply or to be a City Hayward Unified School Board members. We need to be very cognizant of that. I just was witness last week of three students leaving Tarell Elementary because they cannot afford to live in Hayward. We are uprooting beautiful children that have made families in our schools.
Thank you.
So please start there. Thank you so much.
So that was the last card. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Do I have a motion?
I have a comment. May I first?
Well, okay, wait. Go ahead.
And I'll get kind of my motion. Just two things. We have been known to move the agenda and move agenda items for in the future if we feel there's a need to do so. Please request it, and most of the time, we do go with it. I support this notion and I'll move on it, but I think staff, when they come back to us with a proposal, it needs to include Chauva and Cal State in order for it to be complete. Chauva is an in-between road between HUSD and Cal State. Cal State can then tell Chauva, this is what we're looking for. Chauva can then tell HUSD, this is what we're looking for. If we are really serious about being an education community where we take a student from PS, preschool, to PH of the Cal State, we need to do that. We cannot put aside Chauva and Cal State and just simply emphasize HUSD and the city. We need to have those four components. That's my strong recommendation to you.
Madam Mayor?
I...
Madam Mayor?
Yeah. Well, I was going to give the opportunity to people who submitted it to move on it, but... So would you mind if I did that?
By all means.
Okay.
I do mind.
I'm sorry.
I appreciate the enthusiasm by the other side of the table, but our name is on the document itself. So I'd like to have the privilege with my colleague and I to move the item since we authored it. Thank you. So move.
Yes, okay. Now, we can have comments. You said you wanted a comment.
I need one comment.
Yes, okay. Anyone else? Councilmember Lamman.
So, you know, I'm frankly confused by this because, Councilmember Salinas, you made sure that our general plan identifies education as a priority. Appreciate that. We are an education city. We have an H-LAC committee where if there is an item that would support our students in a better way, we absolutely could have that taken up as an agenda item. We have the ability as bodies to meet. So if there is an agenda item that is of mutual interest to both bodies, we can do that. We have the Hayward Promise Neighborhood that is intent... that is whole about collaboration. So I'm not really clear why we need this referral, with all due respect to my colleagues, and therefore I cannot support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? You know, I could support the way that Councilmember Salinas put it when he first spoke tonight about, well, what we're really asking for here is for the city manager to reach out to the school board and suggest that we may want to have a joint meeting at some point, like the ones we have had with the Hard Board. Now, those meetings with Hard Board have been about specific things that we and the Hard Board are doing jointly, parks that we're planning, or the speed, actually, the discussion we had tonight. And I think that there are items that might lend themselves to an agenda on a meeting with the school board. But I just don't know how much more would be accomplished than the avenues that we already have, which are numerous in terms of how this city interacts with the school district, supports our students, and helps. I will point to... Well, first of all, it's a couple of the mentioned, the Hayward Local Agencies Committee, where, you know, we meet not only with the school board reps, but Hard Board. And we are... Right now, one of the big things we're discussing is, well, two of two things: disaster preparedness and joint work on that, and then also work on the census. And everybody, I can't say it enough, we are all going to have to work on the census and make sure that we... Everybody here in this room, which isn't too many people at this point, but you're all involved in the community, you all care about the community, you need to be out there on the census. We've already started work with the other two agencies to make sure that happens. We have Hayward Promise Neighborhood, which brings together all of these institutions that we've talked about, the both colleges, the school districts, the city, and some other, Tercera Vasquez and childcare organizations. So we have that. We have, actually, the city manager and I meet every other month with the school board president and the superintendent. So we have that meeting where we talk about joint issues. Recently, the city manager and I both served along with Ms. Roscoe there on the... Yeah, you're right, on the strategic... Oh, and also, yeah, Tammy, too, on the school district's new strategic plan. and also, yeah, Tammy too, on the school district's new strategic plan, so we were part of that discussion. The city, for a long time, has, has worked with the school district supplying school resource officers, supplying after-school homework support programs, which we now have, I believe, in all of the elementary school, schools that expansion was, I think, in part due to the Hayward Promise Neighborhood, but, but we have, we have expanded over the years, and we started it long before Hayward Promise Neighborhood. Interns, we have interns in our offices from, and I will say, it is not true, Hayward Unified School District students from low-income families do not go to college because they do. I have had interns the last four years that have gone on to quite good schools, and they were not from, they were not from outlandish families, so I'm very proud of them, great students. That does happen in our school district. So, and we're currently working with the school district and some others on this issue of the unaccompanied minor children and trying to find a place to live. So all of this is already happening in a big way, in a lot of ways. Now, I don't know that having a joint meeting with 12 elected officials, all having their chance to talk, like we have tonight, and, you know, how long that meeting would last and whether it would really be productive, but I think it's not a terrible idea to at least try it once and see how it goes and talk about some of these. We do have things, like I just listed, and probably even more, that we are working with the district on. And so, we do have a letter about this from the president of the HUSD board noting that, you know, that this isn't something the city can do alone. Obviously, we have to extend an invitation, and they have to accept for it to happen. And then following that, I don't know what, I don't know what the result will be or whether it will be considered important to do this perhaps once a year. It would not be a bad idea to get together, but, but that's still the question. So the first step is to reach out to the district and say, would you, as a board, like to have a joint meeting with us? And if so, what are the issues we want to see on the agenda for that meeting? And I would be willing to support that if that is what the referral is. Is that pretty much it?
I think that, for the most part, yes. We can start with one meeting. I understand that this is a huge endeavor with a lot of people's times. The reason why that, as you heard tonight, and we've historically seen in Hayward, that we can do more, and I think that it has become a priority, and this is one step to initiate that moving forward. So that is pretty much the goal.
Okay. So if that, if that is what, you know, what this proposal is, I think that that is a start. But it is contingent, of course, on the school district accepting the invitation and... Francisco?
Just, just a quick note. Our two daughters went to Moro High School. Moro High School is a Hayward school that teaches Hayward kids very well, well-ordered. HUSD program is nevertheless a very well-recognized school. So if you decide that your children can go to Moro, that's fine, because I think Moro is part of the educational fabric of the city of Hayward. Somehow or other, eventually, we'll have to talk to Catholic schools. Our three kids are all Catholic school graduates, and they all went to UC. So how surely can I complain? And they're all educated at Moro and at Martin High School. I'm very happy with our program and education program here.
With that, is there anyone else? With that, Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll? Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Sermenyo?
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel?
No.
Councilmember Lamnan?
No.
Councilmember Wahab?
Yes.
Councilmember Salinas?
On behalf of the 65,000 students that live in Hayward, yes.
Mayor Howard, yes. Thank you.
All right. That brings us to... I think that brings us to, yes, adjournment. We will not be meeting next, next Tuesday night, but we will be meeting the following Tuesday night on the 29th, back at City Hall, 7 o'clock. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thanks to all of you who hung in there until the end.